It is 6:01 and we will be postponing the starting of the meeting until we have a council.
Hi Sarah.
Hi.
Are you still feeling well?
Yes, I'm feeling good.
You're not taking an ACE inhibitor? Okay, so you're safe there.
Okay, it is 6:06 PM on April 19th, 2022. We are here as a city council for a work session to go through the city budget. And one excuse, and at this time Tim Bald, he'll be joining us a little bit later. I imagine at this time we have a presentation to kind of walk us through the budget. And Tyler, is that you?
It is. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Council, great to be with you tonight. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss the budget with you. We have taken, as far as approach to this budget, a bare bones approach, okay? So things have been stripped down quite a bit. And as we'll discuss tonight, council certainly has an opportunity to weigh in on what we include or not include.
Is that why we don't have much staff here? It's more than bare bones.
Skeletons.
Okay.
Everybody's working hard. Mayor and Nathan have had more than their fill of me in a number of meetings as we've gone through. It's been great to engage with them and with each of you in our briefings. And everyone's doing all they can to chip in. You know, some gave all, some are even losing parts of their identity. By way of priority, we're really focused on staff and maintaining qualified staff. So the budget includes public safety wages increases, okay? And we'll talk in depth this evening. There's an item in the regular council meeting about the district's tentative budget for council's consideration. But these are some important items in there. Increases for Highland staff in wages at 6%. Then benefits, as typical, we're estimating 10% increase pending receipt of bids back from the networks to determine where those will actually fall.
So, and that's Highland City staff? Because the benefits for the lone peak safety is 25, 25%? Increased benefit according to the... So this is Highland City staff, the 10%? Okay.
It actually applies to both. What you're seeing in the lone peak side, there's some other movement. So in case of police, for example, there were six different employees last year when we were doing the forecast who had less expensive benefits. They were either taking the opt-out option where it's only half the cost of the city. So out of those six, five, their costs basically doubled. And then there were three other staff. So that's why you're seeing more than a 10% increase there, Scott.
In the lone peak safety.
Correct.
That's just on the fireside. The police, no, I'm sorry, the police. I believe fire, if I'm remembering right, there was also a buyout of how we were going to staff at the holiday time pay or something like that, that we were looking at holiday pay.
That's correct.
And how we would do a buyout there, things of that nature to help us with some staffing.
Right. And so there will be some savings specifically on the part-time line that are reallocated to help with some of the increases there on the fireside. Wanted to share with you a number of significant items, particularly in terms of capital projects. There are some projects that are ongoing right now and we're crossing our fingers will be done this fiscal year. To the right, you see those that are ongoing and we anticipate continuing on in fiscal year '23. Note the pump station Murdock, Pheasant Hollow, the country club in Dry Creek, sewer lane replacements. And of course, Mountain Ridge Park. We're hopeful that some work, about a quarter million dollars of work could be done this fiscal year and then the bulk of it next year. Also, a number of projects you see there in fiscal year '23 that are upcoming. We did want to point out here, the culinary projects that have been planned in previous studies. We're postponing those temporarily, putting a hold on that because due to the costs that council's aware of with wells and whatnot, the balance in that fund is minimal. And so there's an ongoing effort right now as we speak to look at utility rates and revise that study and determine how to make that fund sustainable. So that's one thing that you're not going to see in these projects right now. Another item, the parks building is a significant capital project. It's currently not included in the budget. It's part of the list that you have in front of you. We'll go through that in detail here in a moment. Of items that the council has an opportunity to decide if we include those or not. And we'll go through that in detail, like I say. So that list that you have in front of you, we're going to go through these in detail and welcome any questions that you might have. These represent items from not just the general fund, but all of the funds as well. The list in front of you has a summary at the bottom that will kind of break out for you. The total by fund as well as the amount of capital or other ongoing expenses. So the first item for consideration is in the cemetery fund, additional overtime to the tune of $2,000, which would allow for a third person, third employee to do burials on the weekends. Also in the cemetery fund, $75,000 for excavation equipment, specialty equipment to help mitigate some of the impact when staff has to go in and do work there. In the general fund, council appropriations, you'll recall that previously the budget had included a total of $18,000, $3,000 per mayor and council member for special projects and whatnot. And that's included here for your consideration to include or not. Council chambers, audiovisual and broadcasting ability. There's, I believe there's going to be some discussion and presentation from Aaron here coming up. But the price tag could be up to $100,000, but certainly could fall well below that range. In the general fund, general plan update, $75,000. It's an item that we've discussed a couple of years in the past and is included as an unbudgeted item here. Skidster in the general fund for use in the public works department. You'll recall that that was an item where council prioritized with the recommendation of the public works department for a mower to be purchased before that skidster. Park maintenance for additional gardening around this and the public safety buildings, $3,500. And as council has previously indicated, a desire to install some garbage cans there. That's part of the park capital improvement fund at $41,000. On the next page here, it's on the same page in front of you. Capital improvement fund, building capital, $900,000 if the council wants to move forward with the parks. Maintenance building. A texting system, that's two ways. Texts can be sent out to residents and texts can be back in for residents engaged with the city for $5,000. In the general fund, a playground for likely the heritage park, $150,000. Tree replacement, this is considering potential continuation of the direction that council had indicated this year, making that the desire at $50,000. In the general fund, a vehicle for a building inspector who we have on staff now to supplement and address some of the additional volume of work for the building official. That is an expense that could be paid with one-time building permit revenue that we have quite a bit of coming in right now. A second variable message sign for $20,000. And then at the bottom here, a playground for Mitchell Hollow Park. And that would be paid from proceeds of sale of property in the open space fund. General fund, the fire department has been awarded a grant for both the Highland and Alpine stations to improve the exhaust systems, basically to keep the fumes and whatnot from being transferred into their living areas. So the $6,500 represents the 10% match for the Highland station. Traffic control study for $15,000. Radar and RRFB sign for 14. Christmas lights at the $21,000. And in the cemetery, that one will actually come off. Excuse me, we'd updated that previously and I felt to take that off of the slide here. So that is the same skidster that was noted at the 77 before. So that's not a need at this point. So...
So can we ask some great questions?
I'm only taking mediocre questions today.
Medium?
Yeah.
Good, better, best? Okay. Is it okay to ask questions now?
Absolutely, perfect timing.
Because I haven't had the opportunity to sit down with you and go over the budget and different things. And I talked with the mayor recently and we talked about some of these things. I think, you know, we're going to have to make some hard decisions. But just a couple of questions that I wanted to ask. If we have a grant, for example, the fire station exhaust system grant, can we just postpone not using the money on that grant? I mean, how do you take that out of the budget? I mean, we get a grant and we have to match our portion.
Right.
How can we just say, we're not going to do that?
So unlike ARPA or CARES where the money just flows in, this type of grant would, we're awarded the grant, the expenses have to occur, and then we receive reimbursement. So if the city or the district decided not to move forward with that, we simply don't submit then for reimbursement at the end.
But we don't lose the grant?
We would. There's a deadline to use the funds, yes.
And how much is the grant?
Chief, I think we're...
I think it's for 128, 124 total. So it's split between the two stations, so 65 is basically 5%.
So if we don't pay our 6,500, we lose a grant of 125,000? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I mean, more like 60, but yes, it is all one grant. So Alpine is going to have to do the same. They're going to have to come with their 6,500 as well. And then, once we have both stations, the work's done, then we submit and then they reimburse us for the work.
And what's the deadline for doing that?
October of '23, I believe.
So we have a little bit of room if we...
We do have a little bit of room, but yeah.
So a question I have, if I have...
Go right ahead.
I thought we already did an exhaust system over there at the fire station a couple of years back. And so I just was looking, so is this the one that was talked about a couple of years back? I mean, when you're talking exhaust, this is like a little pipe system that's going to go on the trucks when they start up that go outside, right?
Yes, it slides along with the truck so that the exhaust is captured and then it's, you know, it's...
So when Chief Thompson...
They're the ones that put in for us.
Okay, okay, so maybe this is, he talked about submitting a couple of years back and now just coming. Okay, that's why I just wanted to go, is this a duplicate?
Right.
We received this grant probably 10 months ago. We opted, because we have to do, we can't submit for reimbursement until both stations are done. And with Alpine's remodel, we wanted to wait until Alpine's designed so that we don't do work and then that work has to be redone. So that's why we've postponed. We don't want to do Highland until Alpine's ready.
But that's a big size grant. I don't think you'd want to lose it.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's needed.
Okay. So I've got some other questions here. On the vehicle inspector, vehicle for the inspector, if we don't purchase this vehicle, what does he use, a bicycle or does he have a vehicle now? I mean, what is the, what's the alternative here?
Great question. There's a number of older vehicles in the fleet. One that sits typically is parked in the front here, an older small pickup. So there are vehicles that can be used.
This is something that he would still have for transportation.
Correct.
Right. But there's a need to buy a new vehicle because the old one out in the parking lot's pretty old and requiring a lot of maintenance. Is that an issue?
Right. Certainly, there is a means of transportation there. But one other thing to note with regard to building permits, we've recently received an audit alert. It's just kind of a soft inquiry, but those always end up going somewhere from the state auditor's office, indicating concern about how cities, not particularly Highland, but cities across the state are collecting potentially more building permit revenue than is necessary to cover their absolute costs. So that's something that likely we'll have scrutiny down the road. Where we have significant building permit revenue right now, that may be something to show expenses responsibly in the interest of not showing a surplus that we're just pigeonholing away.
Okay. Another question, Christmas lights. Is this $21,000 what we have to spend to install the lights? Because I assume we use the same lights as many as we can from year to year.
That's correct.
So that's, and we pay someone $21,000 to come put those lights up?
That's correct.
Okay.
So no additional purchase of lights is contemplated in that $21?
And so if the city wanted to say, hey, we'll still like the Christmas lights to go up, you could take that $21 and say, hey, could we have the parks department during that November, December time, or November, put them up themselves? Or we could allocate the $21,000 to have an outside service, put up the Christmas lights? That was...
Well, isn't that an outside service we're paying for?
That is an outside service at this current time.
So we maybe bid, maybe get a cheaper deal? Or maybe not put up as many lights? I don't know.
That's the council's...
People love those lights. Okay, another question. The $41,000 for garbage cans. I mean, we've been talking about putting garbage cans in the parks forever. I guess I'm kind of perplexed why we'd want to eliminate those or could we put part of the garbage cans in? I'm kind of wondering why that would be a great cost saver there.
It's certainly something that...
This is just things that have been pulled out. These are ways we can save money.
So I, this, how they got pulled, as I went through with Tyler and Nathan, we went through a couple of different meetings. And anything that I saw that was, that we probably ought to discuss as a council, because this becomes an ongoing expense or this is expensive. These are expenses that I pulled out that I felt were either one-time or that we need to discuss to move forward with them. So that's how they're on this sheet.
So, I mean, would it be a possibility that we could put in part of the garbage cans?
Well, and that's, if the council at one time felt it was very important, the cost is $41,000 to do the 23 garbage cans in the parks. I'm just saying...
If you do have as many or something.
It's up to the council.
So you're trying to find money so we don't have to raise fees and taxes?
I was looking, yeah, because if we're going into it, we're inflationary and we're looking maybe for a tax increase. So I'm going, okay, we have to be answerable to the taxpayer. And this is us now saying, okay, we believe if it be 20,000 is responsible, that's, does that make sense? The council, we're just saying these are expenses that the council needs to be aware of.
Okay.
That we need to decide.
So I meet Thursday with the staff on the budget. So I just wanted to ask these questions because you and I talked too. So I just wondered. So I just have one big question on the big one in here, which is the park maintenance building. We've been talking about new park maintenance building since 2013 and it seems like it keeps getting more and more expensive. Does it make sense to eliminate it this year? I mean, why wouldn't we want to just go ahead? Because the next time it's going to be 1.2 million or something, you know?
This is coming out of reserves and I just think that's something, it was sitting in the budget. So I pulled it up because I thought it was something that shouldn't just be slipping through the budget, it should be talked about.
Okay. So these are for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I know that certainly if there's questions on specific items, I don't want to curtail that. I would like to kind of point out a little bit where we're headed. And I think that will inform questions and consideration of these items specifically.
I just wondered why some of these things were included, so...
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, I have some questions.
Okay.
Oh, will you go back? Playground replacement at Mitchell Hollow Park, that one's not necessary. It doesn't need to be replaced. I think the sand just needs to be replaced in volleyball court.
So when we did that study where we ranked all the playgrounds, that was the highest ranking one in an open space subdivision. That's why it's there.
Yeah, I think that one's good.
Great, happy to come back here and answer any questions there. You may recall from previous discussions, our preliminary estimates indicated a possibility of needing to to raise another $650,000 of revenue in part to address public safety needs. So in the draft budget, that $650,000 is suggested to be raised by increasing the public safety fee from 1150 to 23. Now, that's preliminary and a lot has occurred since that initial calculation. So I want to share with you a few different scenarios. All surrounding the decision of what and which unbudgeted items to include. So if the council were to decide to include all of the unbudgeted items, and again, remember the initial estimate was 650. We've determined that that doesn't need to be quite 650. We'd need about $417,000 of additional revenue. If council decided to raise those funds through increasing the public safety fee, that means the 1150 per month becomes 1925. Scenario number two. If the council opted to do none of the unbudgeted items, the, there actually would be no need for additional revenue. The public safety fee could stay the same and we would end up about neutral. About $188,000 in the positive. Another scenario for consideration, nothing magical, about $400,000. Just as Mayor and Nathan and I have talked, this pegs the increase at a more moderate rate. Would mean increase, needing to raise an additional $223,000 in revenue. And through the public safety fee, that would mean increasing by 300, excuse me, $3.75. That's 375 pennies for y'all, to 1525 per month. So again, nothing magical about 400, just kind of pegging between the three to four dollar range there, so. Any question?
How many nickels would that be?
1525? Fifteen twenty-five?
Yeah.
Ooh. Three hundred, uh, no, thirty-five.
Twenty times fifteen.
No.
Twenty times fifteen equals three hundred and, no, no, fifteen. One, two, three, four. Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Okay, let me clarify that.
So Tyler, did you do a scenario where we kept the park maintenance building for nine hundred thousand K?
That's at the top.
Yeah, is that, okay.
So if, keep in mind.
What do you mean?
These scenarios deal with the general fund specifically. The park maintenance building, for example, is part of the capital building fund.
Okay.
So that has no bearing directly on the general fund, uh, which is what this is considering. So any item that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, that's, no, I'm just trying to understand this because sometimes we group everything together and then we separate into different funds and I think it becomes kind of confusing.
Yeah, if you look on the sheet, if it says general fund.
Right.
It's going to be that four seventeen. If it says capital improvement, that's it coming out of the capital fund, that's, you know, coming out of our capital reserves.
Okay.
Any other questions about these scenarios? All right, so some key milestones free to keep in mind, um, as we, uh, function and, and collaborate with not one, two, but three governing bodies, the, the, the city's council, uh, city council, excuse me, and, uh, the board of the public safety district. So, uh, last week, the, the district board, uh, approved its tentative budget. That's not a final budget by any means. The, the expectation is that that certainly can change. By the end of April, uh, and tonight, we're, we're presenting in the regular session for your consideration, the district's tentative budget for the council to approve, and that's as a result of, of, uh, changes that were made last year, uh, that were needed to affect last year, where it requires both city councils to have the opportunity to approve if the increase in the budget exceeds property tax increases. Uh, Highland City will, uh, consider the, the city's tentative budget, first meeting of, of May, um, which is required by law, uh, by the, the first, uh, meeting in May. Then the district is scheduled to consider adopting its, its, uh, final budget, uh, one week later, a week and a day later on the eleventh. That then gives the city's time to finalize their budgets, um, and adopt their final budgets as required by law by June twenty-second. Um, will be that by a day, um, on our schedule, so, um, it's kind of a little bit of the flow. Seems like June is, is out there a ways, but it comes quickly, um, and a lot of, of collaboration to occur there. Can you help me out there, Kelly? All right, so, uh, back to our favorite lists, um, the purpose, uh, here, of course, tonight is to answer your questions you have, have a discussion with the council, and we would really love your feedback on which items to include, uh, or exclude off of the unbudgeted list.
Tyler, do you mind if I just share a couple of things, you know? One thing as a council, when we talk about one-time expenses, you know, as a capital count, coming out of the capital versus the budget, you know, so, you know, there are some things that, you know, as if it's budgeted, it's going to, right out of the budget, of course, the capital. One thing as I went through the budget, we need to be aware is, over the past two or three years, the city's been funding for sixty-eight hundred West project. And so it appears there's about five hundred thousand dollars that still needs to be reimbursed back to the city. So that will be funds coming back. Will that sit in the capital projects? Will that slip back in? When I say slip, does it go back in the general fund or is it going to stay in a capital project?
Excuse me, majority of that would be in the capital funds, so it came from, um, the capital project funds originally. It would go back to that source.
Okay, the next thing is, is we need to be aware, there is an open space fund out there, which was based off some of the cells. We haven't started to get some of that money, but there's also a fund that's open space that's a, uh, that sits out there. We have a town center exaction fee. That may, it might not be very much, but it could be about forty-one thousand. I'm saying, we're trying to see what money's all out there. We have, one thing that is in the budget is about thirty-nine thousand dollars in credit card fees. As a council, we could decide that we want to charge those who use a credit card, uh, to reimburse for those fees. However, as Tyler brings up, sometimes if a person sends a check in, you have staff's time that has to be to enter that check versus if it's a credit card, it goes right to their account. If it's an ACH payment or a, a bill pay, it also goes back to their account. So, so we'd want to encourage everyone, ACH, we don't get charged on, but a credit card, what percentage do you think we're getting charged at? Three percent? We get charged on a credit card fee?
Roughly.
About, about three percent. So I'm saying, there's another thirty-nine thousand dollars in the budget that if the council gives direction to the staff saying, hey, we would like to now look at starting to get, you know, charge a service fee.
You don't charge a processing?
We don't charge a processing fee or service fee, and it costs the city thirty-nine thousand dollars to process those. Um, you know, so we, we have some of, some of those are coming in. The other thing that's kind of interesting is the cemetery, uh, we've been having, uh, the cemetery's been reimbursing the general, is it the general fund that's been reimbursing? Cause the general fund gave a loan for the cemetery and we have about two hundred, is it two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars that goes each year from the cemetery into the general fund?
Depending on, uh, lot sales, so.
Okay, so based off lot sales?
This year, there is a, a transfer of two hundred fifty thousand dollars approximately, um, budgeted, and that's based on net revenue from, uh, prior years. Uh, that will leave after this transfer, roughly two fifty, uh, approximately three hundred twenty-two thousand dollars owing to the general fund for capital. And as I've talked with Erin, she's been good enough to, to collaborate from St. George where she's at. Um, there's other considerations that I'm not fully versed in as to, uh, some of the maintenance considerations and whatnot. Um, the council could change, um, in the future, but, um, Zian's Bank is currently engaged, um, in reviewing, uh, the cemetery, uh, study, um, and that's something that will be reported to the council.
So what that's meaning is in this budget year right now, we've had cemetery lot sales of two hundred and thirty-two thousand that's generated revenue to the budget. It might not stay consistent if, you know, right now, maybe because times are good, they're buying plots. If we see the economy slip, you might not have the, the plot sells and, and now that, that two hundred and thirty-two thousand shifts a little bit. I'm just, you know, it's all part of the budget that we're seeing is this, this bouncing and act.
It's fluid.
Yeah, it, 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 it just, just sharing that, hey, we have some revenue that's going to come in, or money coming in, but we also have some risk on some other expenses that might not be reoccurring. They're, they're hitting into our budget. We're just trying to give a, a more of a complete picture.
Well, if I might, Mayor, on the cemetery fund, if we continue to see lot sales as we have, that three hundred twenty-two thousand dollars is paid off within two years. Um, and at that point, the general fund is not owed anything and that transfer wouldn't, would not occur.
So that's one of the concerns we have to have is that revenue that won't be ongoing coming in a year, maybe a year and a half.
True. But at the same time, if you raise taxes, more people might die.
Well, we've actually had several burials. We're having several come from outside the community. That's why you see the top item up there, that we are looking for extra funds to build a higher weekend help at the burials. Is because, and I'll tell you why we have that extra fund in there, is we're needing extra help. We've had some damage to the cemetery because when they put the mats down in the winter, they're heavy and so it's really hard just, it, for one guy or two, you know, it's taking three to kind of get the, to orchestrate it during the, the, you know, your Friday and Saturday. I mean, so that's, you know, some of it comes back down to the cemetery. You could do without it, but there'll be some damage in the cemetery.
That's true. Can I, okay, so I'm looking through this, cause I haven't sat down with the staff yet, so and I think other people here are in advantage because they've seen more of the budgetary thing, certainly the mayor. But if we, I just added up, the general fund unbedged this stuff in this sheet, and it comes to two hundred and five, six, and I'm sorry, it comes to six hundred and five thousand dollars. Does that seem reasonable?
That's correct.
Okay, and then you add the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the public safety wants, which is part of the general fund, right?
Correct.
And so what we would need is one point two five million more. And then, but you said in that first, that previous slide, that if we funded four hundred thousand of the unbudgeted, we would need to raise the fee to fifteen twenty-five. So that's four hundred thousand plus the six hundred and fifty thousand we need for public safety.
No.
Okay, so I, I, I'm having a hard time kind of putting these things together.
Sure, great question.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you asking that because that's, there's, there's lots of numbers and scenarios going back and forth.
So the unbudgeted though, you agree it's six hundred and five thousand, right? I just added them up. That's what I got.
That's off the sheets, the unbudgeted.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's correct. So this four hundred represents instead of six hundred fifty.
Or six hundred, okay.
That we're looking to, uh, and the six fifty is really the two twenty-three that you see in that, um, that third column over there. So we'd anticipated needing to come up with six hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional, okay?
Right.
So if we only include four hundred off of this sheet, then that six fifty becomes two twenty-three.
May, okay, I think there's, that's to start with scenario one, and maybe, hell, I'm going to walk through, so the scenario number one, you have six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget that is that fee right there, the nineteen twenty-five, is that correct? How much is that nineteen twenty-five? I mean, is it just generating, so is it the four, four hundred seventeen thousand plus the one eighty-eight that's also in the budget?
So the budget currently has, uh, anticipates the fee being increased to twenty-three dollars an hour and would generate, uh, an extra two, six hundred fifty specifically in the, in the public safety fee. So if we look at that first scenario, instead of six hundred fifty, we've identified a number of areas of savings that reduces that six fifty down to four seventeen. So we do not need to generate six hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's.
So those are savings besides these unbudgeted ones, because this includes all the unbudgeted, which is six hundred and five thousand.
Yeah, if you want to include everything on this sheet, you need to raise the fee to nineteen twenty-five.
Because you found another two hundred and something that you can save, okay.
Hey, if we don't, if we don't want to include anything on the sheet, we have a net revenue surplus of a hundred eighty-eight thousand.
And we leave the fee the same.
Fee doesn't change.
And we still cover the six fifty increase.
Cover the public safety and we still have a hundred eighty-eight thousand that at some other time, we could look at the unbudgeted items to have it go towards it. This has no, if number two has no fee increase or tax increase, has, you know, but you don't have anything on the unbudgeted list here. Nothing here is in there, so.
Well, general fund, unbudgeted.
Yes, only the general fund.
Because we could still do the park safety, you have a different fund, okay.
Or what he, what Tyler's done, he says, hey, let's assume we want to generate a hundred thousand, or four hundred thousand for the unfunded, right?
Which is two-thirds of it, from what I get.
And that, that gives us a revenue of two hundred twenty-three K and that raises the fee to fifteen twenty-five and you're taking four hundred thousand to do these projects on the list.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
So my confusion was just trying to figure out how much the general fund unfunded was, cause you've got everything here and I was just trying to figure that out.
That's great. Uh, I've, I've lived, Mayor's lived and Nathan's have lived, has lived in these numbers for a number of weeks and so it's, it's all very fluid and mush in our head right now.
I've lived in them in ten minutes, so.
Very helpful to have a fresh perspective and we appreciate that.
Okay.
Um, a couple of things that, that council will have an opportunity to weigh in tonight, um, besides this work session. Again, looking at the tentative budget for the district, also we'll be asking for council, uh, guidance and direction on fee or tax. If council feels that, uh, a, you don't have to make that decision necessarily tonight, but staff would want to prepare for which direction we should go, fee or tax, if council says we need to get some more revenue in.
So even, either way you go, I mean, you have to have truth in taxation with a property tax increase, which I'm not in favor of, but a fee increase, you still need to have some public meetings like we've done before.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, have, of that four hundred thousand in scenario three, have you picked and choose the ones that you want to not fund in the unbudgeted, or is that just kind of up to the council as kind of a, a general goal?
And that's the purpose of our, our, uh, discussion tonight. We would like your feedback on which items, um, you'd like us to include in the tentative budget, um, for your consideration on, on May third. Again, tentative budget, not final. Um, and there will be opportunity for discussion, but to, to head in a direction of which items should be included or not included.
So if we picked like scenario three, we could go through, you want us to go through tonight and say, hey, do this, this and this?
That'd be great.
Okay, so we want to save the trees.
So we can make suggestions of which line items we want to take off? Are we to that point?
How about we do this? Let's just start at the top. You guys can say one to five. A five says we fund it, one says we don't. Does that make sense of your, okay, so the very first item on here is cemetery overtime.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Can I ask Rob a question really quick?
Yeah.
Rob? Okay, I know we've discussed in the past the ramifications of establishing or raising fees. We know that there is the possibility that there could be lawsuits established or associated with those, but no such litigation would be associated with raising taxes, because that is something that the taxpayers would approve. So there's no litigation there, but every, no matter, regardless if you go with fees or taxation, we have to establish a basis to rationalize the increase. It can't just be random or what we want. It has to be based upon numbers and accounting, correct?
Uh, partially, yes. Any fee must be reasonably based on the actual cost of providing a service. Taxes are to raise revenue and cities can raise any amount of taxes they want up to a constitutional limit. Uh, the limit is more a political limit in terms of you have to respond to the citizens. Um, both with fees and taxes, there's no direct vote of the people on it. However, there are both legislative acts subject to referendum. So fees must be tied to a service, kind of reasonably related to it. You have to have some kind of number you can peg it to. Tax can be whatever you'd like up to the constitutional limit, which we're not close to. However, both could be subject to referendum.
But there's a difference between a referendum and a lawsuit.
Correct. A referendum is just, the citizens ask that it be put to the ballot before it become, uh, take effect.
And there's a, a requirement of number of signatures, which is very, it's actually a quite difficult, um, level to, to reach in terms of signatures.
Correct.
But.
But with fees, there is a chance of litigation. There's already, the pending litigation with Pleasant Grove, which is pending for the Supreme Court.
And we still don't know what the result of that is.
We still do not.
Boy, they're pokey, um, giving an answer, cause that would set a precedent that we could follow that. So in your opinion, which is more prudent?
The, the fee that we're talking about right now, uh, public safety, that is not, has not been challenged. There is some case law that supports having public safety fees out there. Um, and the Pleasant Grove fee being challenged is the transportation or road fee. Highland has a similar one, but it's, the, the public safety fee is a bit different, so it's less subject to a tax. I think the council has an option of going either way.
You're being very much a lawyer right now.
And ultimately, this is a political question. I can't say.
What is your recommendation? If, if you had to, if world peace depended upon, you're giving me an answer.
Oh, no.
Come on, the world's depending on you. Whi- which would you recommend? Not, I mean, obviously it's not binding, but what would you recommend?
If I, you know, not taking any politics into question.
Sure.
I would say go through a tax. It's the least risky option for the city. As a lawyer, I would say go the route that has the fewest challenges to it. And that, I mean, legal challenges, I don't mean political challenges or citizen uprisings against the tax, which is an entirely separate issue.
So what you're saying is you're obliging us to go the tax route?
I am not obliging you to do anything.
No.
No, I, thank you for the recommendation. I, I appreciate that.
Can I make a comment? Cause I've, I've been through some of this on tax and, and fees quite a bit. And this is my gut feeling and I, I wrote this in an email. I think we really need to wait until we know what the Supreme Court rules on that road fee. And, and my feeling is, is if we lose the road fee, because somebody will probably challenge it in our city, then, then's when you can make a compelling argument to raise property taxes. But I don't think we want to be in a position where we raise property taxes two years in a row, nor do we want to be preemptive on the property tax in a time of high inflation and gas prices off the. Because I sat through a property tax increase in two thousand twelve. We had every, with the Sunday opening debacle, we had everybody stand up and say, we will pay more property tax if you keep our city closed. We raised the property tax and they referred it with a referendum as fast as you could turn around and we had to rescind it. So I, I, I think to raise property taxes, you always have to have a compelling argument. To me, the compelling. To me, the compelling argument is if we lose the road fee next year or this coming budget near, we'll have to replace that, um, with some way and we'll have to have the discussion with the community. But I don't think we need to be in a position where we raise property taxes two years in a row. I, I'm a little uncomfortable with that.
So I'm gonna give, just chime in a little bit. I'm gonna go with Scott on the fee versus the tax, I'll, I'll share with you a little bit why. Let's assume we decide to, to increase the fee and, you know, if it be the fifteen, whatever it might be that the council decides on. We can say, let's hold off on all these discretionary, you know, or unfunded budget things until we get the court case. We don't start spending any of this money. Hell and high water happens, we lose that court case, we're then go to the scenario, scenario number two and go, okay, we're not gonna fund all these, but we still have a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. We funded public safety, we're safe there, we have a hundred and eighty-eight we can do. Now, where, where our risk comes in is we don't have this extra money from the cemetery in a year and a half. We have, our revenue could go down if there's a recession, we could start having sales tax, another revenue start to dip. We could have inflation that eats apart our revenue the other way. I mean, you know, and so it's, when you talk about a bouncing, no one would have known two years ago what we know now. Don't we, isn't going, hey, we didn't know we were gonna be in hyperinflation. Do we stay in hyperinflation and our eleven fifty fee doesn't even look like any, I mean, it just, it's just shooting up? Or do we head into recession and then our taxes go down? That's what we have to make a decision as a council. We're trying to make the best going forward decision as, yeah, it might be easy say, let's don't do any tax increase. We've got some concerns about inflation and recession both ways that balance it. And so it might be, we want to do a small fee increase, that's my.
So are you leaning towards a small fee increase?
Yes.
Or no fee increase? Cause I was a little confused at first when you started talking.
I hate to say raising taxes, but I think because inflation or recession might be here in the, in the near future, I think we oughta come and get a little bit extra revenue, cause we know we're gonna start losing the cemetery revenue coming up in the next year and a half.
Okay, I understand that and I, I agree with that actually. So Tyler, and I brought this up before. The last two years, we have very much underestimated our sales tax. Now, sales tax again is dependent on recession and different things. I think this year you're trying to estimate it a little bit closer. But it seems like every year we're very, very conservative in our budget revenue. And then at the end of the year, we have extra revenue coming in, property tax, sales tax. And then we start doing what I call taking rabbits out of the hat, because we need this or that, we're gonna pull it out of this fund and that fund. I, I'm kinda wondering if maybe we should maybe be a little more aggressive in what our estimates are, the revenue, and put more things into the budget and then maybe if we're running short, then eliminate those things, can you do that? I mean, uh, it seems like we're always kinda, does that make sense? Cause we underestimated sales tax by eight hundred thousand dollars over the last couple of years, right?
Correct.
So, I don't know.
Uh, we are trending currently, the, the budget was amended in January.
Right.
Uh, to increase sales tax estimates by three hundred thousand to three point three million. Three, three million, um, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. We are trending now, we have a few more months of data, uh, to, to three point four five. So another hundred thousand dollars roughly.
Right.
Um, and that is consistent with the last twelve months. So if you go back, uh, to, we're, we're April, right? So if you start in April of, uh, of twenty-one through March, uh, of twenty-two, those twelve months is pretty close to that three forty-five.
Okay.
So we're, we're estimating an increase even above that at the three point six. And, uh, but you're absolutely right, the council can certainly say, look, we have erred.
Conservatively.
Too much, too conservatively, um, in the past. And because we have thirty-five percent in reserves, we're comfortable, um, stretching that a little bit. But we, we, we never want to be in a position that we find that deficit year after year.
Right, right, we don't want that. So other things on property tax, I mean, we're kinda dependent on property tax increases by growth. So, uh, my church ward includes the Boyer development and we have families moving in every week into that. Um, though I assume those people are moving in in April, May and, and by midsummer are gonna have to pay property tax, right? Do you get one free year or something, I don't know how that, yeah?
A year plus, as it turns out. Um, and I'm working with the, the county assessor's office to try and nail that down, so we can be more specific. Cause it's not just a matter of like sales tax, you know, we think the percentage.
Right.
It's really dependent on, like you say, the growth. And it, it appears that the county is using building permits pulled in August of the year prior. So here in fiscal, uh, in fiscal year twenty-three, November of twenty twenty-two, uh, property would have had to have a building permit pulled by the end of August of twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yes. Um, in order for that to, to be on the tax rolls, that's based on the data that.
Those, these people that are moving in now won't have to pay taxes for another year? Get one free tax year?
Probably not.
They'll pay based on their lot price, does that make sense? It's not the.
Yeah, so they will pay some.
Yeah, they'll pay some, it's usually what the basis is on January first. Uh, like for this year's, your basis is January first, twenty twenty-two.
Right.
And, and they'll.
So if they own their lot.
If they had closed on their home, probably had pulled the building permit by August, then that, you know, so we're not gonna see Boyer, cause I don't think anything would have been in by August. So Boyer won't come in until the next budget year. But that's a good point, we should see a little bit of revenue, give us a little bit of a bump from all those units.
And our request to the, the county assessor was, you don't have to, uh, provide or produce the tax rule until May, but at least give us last year so we can be very specific in our projections. And from there, we have data that we can pull from our building permits to say, here's what wasn't included enough of that, uh, for a projection for the next couple of years on property tax.
So I should stop telling people, we're glad you're here for your property tax, I'll just wait, I actually said that.
We'll be happier in a year or two.
Really appreciate you coming, thank you for your tax dollars.
As far as revenue projections go, strategy is either to, is how conservative we'd be, what our number is. I would suggest it's better to add things once we have more, a better understanding, like Adam in December, than it would be to take things out in December.
But, yeah, and I'll talk more on Thursday. There's some of us just a little concerned that, uh, we always have these kinda surpluses every year, which is not guaranteed. But then we have a lot of things that we think should have been discussed and put in the budget that all of a sudden, surprise, we're gonna buy this machine for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or these vehicles. I, I kinda would rather see them ahead of time and, and maybe subtract them if we didn't quite have enough. So I mean, it's a difference of opinion on that, but I kinda always feel, I don't know Brittany, you were talking about, you kinda feel like it's rabbits out of the hat sometimes, yeah.
Yes, sometimes in December it feels like that happens. Like we couldn't have Christmas lights, but then we have money to buy a big piece of equipment in December. Can I ask you a question, Tyler?
Yeah.
At what point do we, do we have to get to before we acknowledge that the inflation that you're talking about hit, hits the city also? And has been since two thousand eight? When we raise property taxes last?
Great question. Um, CPI over the last year, western region, so this is not just the, the whole country. Um, this is western specifically and guess what, Utah's even more aggressive, um, in inflation right now. Um, eight point seven percent over the last twelve months. If you look at average inflation over, um, a decade, typically between two and three percent. Um, but when you compound that, that means that, uh, your dollar is buying sixty to seventy cents of what it used to.
But, but as we get sales tax, as you went to the grocery store and let's just say the bread costs a dollar and now it costs two, you're getting taxed higher on that two dollars versus the one. And so that also boosts our sales tax revenue, does that make, I mean, so.
Yeah.
So some of it were coming, as the property values go in, so if, as Ridgeview comes in, those new homes are gonna be at a higher tax rate than our homes that have been here in the community for a while. I mean, so there's, uh, there is some offset going on.
Tyler?
Yes.
What percentage, if any, of the budget surplus is necessarily allocated to a rainy day fund?
So, uh, by rainy day fund, we're, I assume we're talking about the up to thirty-five percent, uh, fund balance.
Right, but what else can, what else can utilize that fund? Is it, is it restricted to a rainy day fund? And can we accumulate more and more money over the years?
Uh, the city is currently at, at the end of fiscal year twenty-one at thirty-five percent, which is the limit.
Which is the what?
The limit, the state.
The cities can't have more than thirty-five percent in their general fund.
And cannot allocate, um, if it's going to dip below five percent. So, uh, fortunately, we're not in that position right now. But, uh, the state requires that that be between five and thirty-five percent to allow for, among other things, um, the ability to cash flow operations when, uh, revenue is, is somewhat irregular, property taxes. Um, rainy day fund, of course, but it is certainly not restricted by a, in any sense other than can't go below five percent, um, in the use that the council might decide for those funds.
So, anything you're saying, like if we wanted to buy a water slide, I mean, we could go in there and, and we can do that.
Within, within the law, yep.
Now Tyler, maybe the, so let's just assume we have a surplus at the end of the year of three hundred thousand. That doesn't stick in the general fund, cause we have over thirty-five percent. We, so Tim, at that time, we will then do a transfer to a capital account, which is how we have the money to do the park maintenance building. It's coming from our surplus.
From previous years.
Previous years.
Correct.
So it's a previous year surplus is where you're going, okay, how do we want to spend that surplus? Is we see a need that we've probably had for ten years for a park maintenance building, does that make sense? So the council then can allocate that surplus to go towards that. Right now, it just keeps sitting there. Now we have the, the question comes up about what about Mountain Ridge Park? Most of the funds for Mountain Ridge Park is restricted funds, meaning we sold Spring Creek property, which was bought with a bond, which was park bond, and so that money has to come and stay in park. We can't move it any other fund than park. We have, we have the ARPA funds, which have restrictions on them, how we can spend the ARPA funds. We can't just go put it in our general fund. It has to be to a specific use, parks being one, bathrooms were one, does that make, and so, so we, some of the funds are restricted, even though there, there might be a bounce out there, we can't come slipping in our general fund.
Okay.
So I'm hearing from the council, uh, generally, I think this applies specifically to the general fund unbudgeted items, a desire to wait, um, until determination on, uh, the fee through the Supreme Court or another point, uh, or later in the year, is that what we're hearing?
Well, I understand this, the, um, Supreme Court judgment comes June to September? We don't know, right? So that's past our budgetary year.
We, we do have the option and as we've, we've done since I've been here and I'm certain before, we'll do budget amendments, um, and that's where these, these items could be reconsidered.
So are you suggesting that we don't fund any of these general fund unbudgeted things, is that what you're saying? Are you hearing that?
That is, uh, what I'm hearing from the council.
Well, I think I said that, saying until we know about the fee, we can say we'd like to have it in the budget, but we don't spend those items in the budget till we understand what the ruling was on the fee. To me, that's just being more responsible, don't go spend that money yet until we really know what that ruling is. Cause these are, these are items are unbudgeted, you know, they're not, some things aren't time sensitive. That's, you know, you know, if they're time sensitive, we gotta make a decision beforehand. But like a tree replacement wouldn't happen till next spring probably.
Are you saying though, that's every single one of these or just the general fund items?
No, they're just a general fund.
Okay.
There's six hundred and five thousand general fund by my calculation.
Make sure it didn't touch on the capital ones.
Right.
Okay.
So in that case, in that scenario, we wouldn't go ahead to raise any sort of fee?
Or we could, I mean, that's, that's up to the council. Do you want to go out to the public right now and, and, you know, it depends, do you want to do a public? Do you want to do a, a property tax increase? If it is, we have to do it now. If you're doing a fee, you can actually do it whenever you'd like, it's not specific, that has to be done by August, is that correct? Rob, Nathan, Tyler, if it's a fee, we can institute it anytime.
It's correct.
Okay, so let's just wait till the Supreme Court comes out with the ruling and just not fund these things. I mean, that makes sense.
That's, I'm just saying that's one option.
Well, we've been kinda flipping between two or three options, but, I mean, you could just say, let's wait until we hear.
If you want.
A question on that.
Yeah.
So this is, um, you know, number three, which is, you know, out of those three scenarios, I'm thinking number three is maybe the more palatable. But so that public service fee is per month, so if we don't wait, if we wait until fall, will we put ourselves in a position where we have to increase the fee more?
No, cause right now, we have a budget, we have a budget surplus of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And it doesn't include anything on this sheet. So if there's something you're going, hold it, we need to be budgeting for some things on the sheet that we need to add it back in. And if, if we add in things more than a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, then we're out of budget.
I, I think Sarah, if I'm understanding correctly, I agree with your, what you're saying, because these estimates are based on twelve months of fee revenue.
Yeah.
If we wait an early any nine months, then that then reduces the overall total, yes. Um, if you want to do the, do the same items, it would mean increasing the fee higher.
Well, and, and there are some items on the sheet, even if we had the money, I wouldn't want to do. So. Yeah, like, uh, Andy's gonna throw something at me, but the parks maintenance building.
That's capital though.
That's in the capital.
That is the capital, right.
Capital fund, so it's a different fund.
So it's a different fund, but I thought we needed to shave this down a little bit. So there are certain things that I would say, oh, we can, we can shave that down.
So one of the things to consider is your messaging to the community, right? If we go and we say, hey, uh, we paid for this, now we can't, what, what are you telling the community about increase and what we're actually using the money for?
Well, definitely there's things on here that we do need to fund.
And so what Nathan's saying is we, right now, the, one of the reasons we're, we were looking, that we need to do an increase in the public safety fee is cause public safety is coming in with a request of six hundred thousand plus. And because that request is dealing with the budget that starts January first, Nathan's saying, do we want to do the increase based off of the public safety? If that's what we're saying, the fee is increasing for its public safety, the request starts January one. Is that, am I understanding that correct?
Yes, July one.
So July one, you have that need for the excess budget in the public safety.
Well, and one thing is if you do go up to the fifteen twenty-five, that's a three dollar seventy-five a month raise, it's not so bad.
Yeah.
And you have a compelling argument that, uh, we need to increase, especially the police officers' salaries, because we're losing police officers. So I, I mean, you have a compelling argument for a little increase in the fee. Um, and you make that, next year, if, if we lose the road fee, then we have to have this discussion as a community, whether we want to fix our roads and trails and all these things and we can loop it in there. But we're not gonna be able to make that decision until we get the Supreme Court decision, which is the big problem.
So let's come back on the question of the public safety fee. And I know this is kinda be something on the agenda later on, is the thought that we'd like to have it, any fee increase is tied to public safety and would you be in favor of having it tied to start on July first? When the, when it start, when the, when the public safety budget goes in effect at the higher amount, that that's when the fee also goes into effect at the higher amount?
That's what I would say.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, I'll pull this, Sarah, yes or no?
On July one, yes.
Okay, July one, what about you, Brittany?
Yes.
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 Tim?
Yes.
Okay, so I, now, so what we're looking at is we're looking at have the public safety fee go to fifteen twenty-five. And as a council, do we want to try, now I know we have city council starting at seven and we're past seven. Do we want to try to discuss these items now? We, do we can talk about this and other budgetary items later on? You know, cause I think we've narrowed in on option number three, correct? That's what we were saying.
I think there's a consensus developing for that.
Okay, do you want to discuss these now or do you want to go to the city, the city council meeting at seven? Do we need to go because we have?
Yeah, we should probably go.
Start the city council.
Okay. Is everyone, I need a motion to, I, do I need a motion to adjourn the work session?
I will move that we adjourn the work session.
Second.
Don't move.
Okay, we've now adjourned our work session. Do we need to take a small break before we start city council or can we start? Small break, five minutes. We will start at seven fifteen.
Sure. Because I, I don't think there's that many people here. It's not like the other two times. So we don't have the new plan, right? Last week, it was fine. Yeah, it'll be good. So you gotta have some sort of plan. So you gotta have a plan. You can't walk in this, we need the money.
Okay, it is seven nineteen on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. We'd like to open our city council meeting at this time. We will begin with an invocation by Councilmember Tim Ball, followed by the Pledge Allegiance by Councilmember Scott Smith.
Please stand.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, citizens of the United States of America, and here's a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We, this will be now the time for unscheduled public appearances. There will be some discussion. If, if you are here to discuss the item about forty-eight hundred West, we will take a public comment on that, as well as the Lone Peak Public Safety Budget. We will also take a comment on that. But if you're here on any other item, we invite you to come up at this time to address the council. Seeing none, we'll now close the unscheduled public appearance. And we will now, I believe we have a person here from our youth council to come up and report a little bit what's going on with the youth council. Larry, light green.
Okay.
State your name, please.
I'm Lindsay Skidmore. I'm a member of the Government Committee on Highland Youth City Council. And an update on our past activities, a few weeks ago, we had our annual Easter egg hunt, and that went really well. We had a really good turnout. And our last activity was postponed until this Thursday, and we're excited to host Senator Mike Kennedy. And he's gonna do a Q and A with us, combined with the Cedar Hills Youth Council. So we're super excited for our upcoming activities. Thank you.
I just, FYI, so we have Senator Kennedy coming on Thursday night with, for the youth council. Is there, I know I'm planning to be there, how many council people are planning to show up that night? Just in case, if we have to make a public, a notice of it.
I'll be there.
Okay, anyone else?
I would love to be there, but I gotta go to a granddaughter's say.
I'm just wondering, worried if we get three city council members, I just want to make sure. Anyone else? Okay, I think we'll be okay, we don't need to make any notices.
So if I come, it's just me and Brittany?
Yeah, so you'll be okay if you come.
Okay.
And I would, Senator Kennedy will be answering questions, but I heard there might be some ethical controversies. Why I mentioned Senator Kennedy is maybe give the youth council an item that was discussed in the, you know, as a bill, and have you guys debate it, and then have to even vote on that bill. And then he'll discuss how the vote went about with the legislators. So I, we're really looking forward and appreciate Senator Kennedy doing that. We now have a presentation or a discussion from Central Utah Water Conservancy District. Rick, I think it's Lick, Leroy, am I saying that right?
Malloy.
Malloy?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm Rick Malloy with Central Utah Water Conservancy District, the water conservation manager there. And wanted to just take a few minutes to talk about some of the programs that we have available, as well as some of our recommendations that we're providing to all cities within our service area. Actually, is there a way that you can click on that? And it's okay, it's okay if it doesn't work, but I just wanted to give you a, a little bit of background. On our website, we have water supply updates. This is very important, as we all know, we're, we're facing a drought. Over ninety percent of the state is in severe drought, with a good portion of the state in extreme drought. And so on our website, we have a resource, if you would like to share that with others, underneath our, our water information tab. And so you can kind of scroll through that and see what, you know, where we are compared to this time last year. Are we better or are we worse? It goes through our soil, moisture content, our snowpack. So I don't want to go into that today, but I did want to provide that as a resource to you, so that if you would like to talk with others about our water supply, there is that available. So we can jump back to the presentation, but I did want to just provide that update for you. We have several programs that are direct for residents. These are a couple of programs that we've had for several years, very popular programs. We have a, a smart controller rebate, seventy-five dollars if you buy it, irrigation smart controller. We also have a toilet rebate for older homes, anything that was built before nineteen ninety-four. They can get a hundred dollars per toilet. That essentially covers the cost of a new toilet. And so these, again, are very popular for, for those that are in that, in that situation.
So if they want, do they just go on your website, do they purchase it first? And then, then they give you the receipt, and then you guys send them a check for like seventy-five or a hundred?
Exactly, exactly. So they go in, they apply on utawatersavers.com. That's where all of our residential rebates are found. So they've got the smart controller, the toilet rebate, and then we have two new ones. We have Flip Your Strip and Local Scapes Rewards. The Flip Your Strip is, if, if a homeowner wants to change out the lawn in their park strip, they can replace it with something that's water efficient, and we'll give them a dollar twenty-five a square foot for that lawn replaced. So that's a good program. And then Local Scapes Rewards is for those residents who want to replace maybe their entire front yard or their entire backyard, or convert some of their landscape to a water efficient landscape. And so, again, this is just an incentive. We offer tons of classes to teach people how to do this. We want this to be kind of a DIY. That's the majority of the applicants that we have, do it themselves, they get a, a check back from us. Again, the legislature passed HB one twenty-one that appropriated five million dollars for this, for this program. The Central Utah Water had appropriated a million dollars for this. And so combined, we've got quite a bit of funding available to your residents and, and the residents throughout Utah County and Salt Lake County for these programs.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
So on the Flip Your Strip, which is kind of an interesting, a program, so you have to apply for it, and, and I would assume there's a plan, does somebody come inspect it? I mean, how do you know that people comply with the plan that they presented? Does that make sense?
So with the Flip Your Strip program, we don't require any submittal of a plan. They apply, they take a picture showing that they had lawn in their park strip before it's been replaced. And then, once they've replaced it, we go out and we do a measurement, and we cut the check based on that measurement and inspection after. We do have some requirements. We, we do require fifty percent plant coverage. We don't want to see just all rock. We don't want to be in a situation where we're not replacing landscape. We, we don't, we're not Southern Nevada, we're not Phoenix, Arizona. Vegetation grows well here. We want to, we don't want to have a heat island effect or anything like that, so we want to see plant material put back in. So we do require for our program fifty percent plant coverage at maturity. So they may be little tiny plants here and there, but the expectation is, is that they grow and, and fill in at least fifty percent of that space.
And aren't there classes that they can take to, to figure out what are water-wise plants versus those that actually will require more water taking out their grass?
Yes, so we offer about thirty-five classes a year, but then there are also on-demand classes for Local Scapes and Flip Your Strip. So people can take a class at any time, they're always available online to get information about how to do the program, what is, you know, good practices, you know, what are things that work well in park strips, and maybe things that you shouldn't put in park strips. So we do offer a lot of classes in that as well, so.
What about if a city, you know, wants to do, you know, maybe, I'm just, we wanted to do something up here, are we part of that program? Can we submit for that?
Yes, well, no, but we have another program that's available for you, which is our Landscape Leadership Grant, which is a little bit different than the city, or than the residential program. But we allow commercial, institutional, or city landscapes that are being converted, or new landscapes. So let's say you've acquired some new land, you want to put in a park, and maybe you want to put this park in a little bit more water efficient than what you've done in the past. So you can apply for these programs, and essentially what we're trying to do is either provide funds to replace a landscape or the cost difference between, because we know that the, that it might cost a little bit more money to have something more water efficient. So we want to offset that cost, so that there's no additional cost to you as a city. And so this program right here, we have about half a million dollars available in funding for this program. And it's all yours.
Thank you, I want to tell you thank you.
So, so this is a great program. We have seen a lot of, this picture actually right here is from a gas station in Spanish Fork, and they got about eighty thousand dollars from us, and initially, their plan just showed all turf. We don't need turf at a gas station, there's no benefit for that lawn there. And so they were able to put in a water efficient landscape. They save about, I think, I think that one is saving about thirty or forty million gallons of water a year.
So hypothetically, let's assume the city had a park that they were planning to put in, and we were gonna put grass everywhere. I just want, you know, it was gonna be green. But we, we. we, we are now maybe considering this Landscape Leadership Grant up in our front park strips. Is that something, since it's new going in, we could possibly apply for?
On the street and everything?
Yes, that, and in fact, that's an excellent application for this. So maybe you're pulling in, you're taking out some of the, the grass spaces in parking lots or things like that or you're pulling it out of the park strip. And we have a calculator online that says, we're gonna put in, we were gonna put in, you know, five hundred square feet of lawn and instead we took that out. Or five thousand or five million.
And does it already have to be in?
Nope.
Okay.
Cause we've got a deal for him. We're gonna put a bid out tonight, huh?
So, yeah, so we're happy to help with that as well. We have trained staff available that can help, you know, with any questions that you have. And we're, we love to give money away. So, and we love to give money to cities even more, cause that's, that's kind of our, our objective here, so.
They'll be happy recipients.
Great. We also have our commercial smart controller rebate. This one has also been very popular. Sandy City, Salt Lake City, Linden City have all taken advantage among many, many others. But you can see, the University of Utah, we gave them about a hundred thousand dollars. They converted their entire campus with new WeatherTrack smart controllers. And in the first year that they did that, they saved a hundred and six million gallons and that's just on their campus. So the water savings is real. These are also very popular from a city viewpoint perspective. You get less calls because now somebody can turn off every single park from their phone rather than it would take, you know, three or four days to go around and drive a truck and manually turn off all the controllers. And so if you don't have smart controllers, we provide up to fifteen hundred dollars per controller. And then we have some more rebates associated with that that we can work with your Parks Department on if that's something that you're interested in. We also have another grant program, a water efficiency program that is available to all municipalities. Some of the things that we funded is secondary metering, AMI and meter improvements, other city landscapes. So there's things that maybe don't fit well in the lands, or the, yeah, the Landscape Leadership Grant that can be put into here. Canal lining and improvements. So there's a lot. I've spoke with your golf course here or the one that's connected. I don't know if you guys share it with another city or not, but the golf course is just down the road here and they are looking at this grant program as well. So.
Are you talking about Fox Hollow?
Yes. Is that in Highland?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's right on the border.
It's right on the border.
Part of it used to be.
We get their golf balls in our streets.
There you go. So this program, we've got about a million dollars in current available funding. However, if there is a project that exceeds that scale, usually these projects take several years in planning. If it's something that we're passionate about and we can come together on, we can actually provide funds in addition to that one million dollars. A great example is right now, we're working with Linden City on, they've got a canal that leaks, you know, hundreds of millions of gallons a year and, and we're looking at alternative solutions to providing secondary water through that system. So just, you know, the, the sky's the limit. If there's a water conservation aspect to it, we wanna hear about it and we're happy to provide funding.
Can I add a question? So the state is also gonna probably provide funding for secondary metering, but your stating, there can be also funds from you to help offset some of that secondary metering. So we could, can you double dip? You know, you're gonna get the funds from the state and from you or is it one or the other?
So we had these funds in place before the state had their program. And now we're working with the state to make sure that our funds don't conflict. Linden City has applied for our program. They, we have an agreement with them for about four hundred thousand dollars. Of course, it's, they're getting a lot more from the state. The state initially came back and said, hey, this doesn't work, but I'm working closely with water resources to make sure that we don't compete with those funds. But right now, I would say there's no hurt in applying for everything and seeing what you can get. So that is something that we can work with you on. So the last thing I kinda wanna talk about is our recommendations for water efficiency standards or water efficient ordinances for new development. One of the things that's very apparent is we have, we're growing, we're rapidly growing. This, you can see here in that graph, our water supply is that red line, or our projections for water usage is that red line. Our water supply is everything that's kind of down in that bottom section. The potential future water supply, this is for Utah Lake Basin, is conversion of agriculture. That's the water. That's the only water we have left in, in Utah Basin is really that conversion. And so we say potential because a lot of people value that agriculture in their communities and don't wanna see it move away. That means we have to be even more aggressive with water conservation. So if we meet our goals and if we build better, then you can see we're gonna hover around that green line. We'll be able to extend our current supplies. And so that's why efficient ordinances are key to moving forward. And so I just wanna cover a few of those. Again, these ordinance should, should apply to all new development, whether it's commercial, residential, institutional, or industrial. There's an indoor fixture requirement. This is almost a moot point. It's very hard to buy non-water sense approved fixtures in homes, but again, this is required. Outdoor landscaping standards would apply to all new, new and rehabilitated landscapes. Rehabilitated is a little bit tricky. Most cities don't have an inspection program in place for rehabilitated residential landscapes. They might have it for commercial, but there's some wiggle room on that. Irrigation requirements, this is really important, making sure that you have overhead irrigation for your lawn only, that your, everything else is irrigated by drip and that's separate from the lawn zones. Smart controllers, again, it's just good practice moving forward. Saves a lot of water. Mulch, this is your greatest ally in terms of weed protection, weed prevention, blight on the city, making sure that landscapes continue to look good moving forward. So we say you gotta have at least three to four inches of mulch. And that could be rock, it could be bark, it could be other organic or inorganic materials. That's up to the builder or the person that's putting in the landscape. We also have a plant material requirement. Again, this is so that we don't turn into a heat island. We're not, you know, we wanna make sure that there's vegetation. We know the property values are directly tied to, you know, how the landscape looks and we wanna see trees, we wanna see vegetation. This percentage is, is flexible. It's whatever the city wants, but we, we recommend fifty percent. And that doesn't include tree, tree canopies. With lawn, we have a few recommendations. We don't wanna see lawn and slopes greater than twenty-five percent. That's where we see a lot of waste. We see a lot of runoff in those areas. Also, anything less than eight feet wide. Sprinklers are not really designed to irrigate in those narrow areas. The efficiency is drastically reduced when you have small areas. And then where practicable, practicable, man, that's a hard word all of a sudden. You know, we wanna see it free of obstructions. We don't wanna have, you know, if you plant a tree and right on the other side, you've got a sprinkler, you're never gonna get good coverage. You're always gonna be struggling to try and irrigate that lawn. So our, we follow the Local Scapes guideline. That's kind of a principle that we developed in partnership with Jordan Valley on developing a good, what fits for Utah landscape. And so what, you can kinda see this plan view here. We want the lawn to be a designed element. We want you to think about how to irrigate it and we want to put that in, in where it makes sense, where you're gonna use it. The governor has a, a good term that he's been coining where it's, you know, functional turf. If the only time you step on it is to mow it, rip it out. So you put in your gathering areas, you have activity zones, you connect everything with paths. And then the default area outside of those areas is where you put in your plants. That's where you fill in with your ornamental grasses or whatever you wanna put in. So that's, you can see here, this is a great local scape. This landscape saves half the water of an identical landscape across the street. And it doesn't look like it would be a water efficient landscape, but it is. And so I think it's really important to get people out of the mindset, you know, we're not trying to look like Las Vegas, we're not trying to look like Phoenix. We can have lawn, we can have green in our landscapes, we can have the cooling effects and the, you know, the impacts or the beneficial impacts of vegetation in our communities and still be water efficient. So this is what an ordinance would look like. This is the implementation of ordinances, is houses like this. And then we do have some considerations for small lots. We know that density is, is becoming tighter and tighter. And so we do have some exemptions there and recommendations on that. And again, we wanna see the same thing happen in commercial. And you probably already have ordinances on the books for commercial. It's been a lot easier and it's a good place to start. And with that, there's my contact information. If you ever need anything, if you need assistance, whether it's in your own home or at any city properties, we're always happy to help. We've got a full staff available. We've got landscape experts. We have horticulturists. We, we're, we're set up to, to help you with your water efficient needs. And with that, that's the end of my presentation. Happy to take a few questions. I know I kinda zipped through. I wanted to be conscious of your time. So thank you very much for allowing me that time.
You know, I really appreciate this, cause it gives us a lot of resources and things. And what I like hearing is that we don't have to do like the local hospital here that took out all their lawn and put it all in gravel. And, you know, I, I think that's kind of an extreme, cause you say we don't live in Arizona, we don't live in Las Vegas. So we can still have plants and some green lawn and that. In fact, it sounds like you prefer that. So, and this is kind of an off-the-wall question, but there has been discussion of aquifer recharging. I'm not gonna talk about anything specific, but what's the feelings on the Central Utah project? Do you promote that? I mean, you built reservoirs and pipes and, and all this stuff. What do you think about aquifer recharging?
Well, I'm sure that the city's already well aware that we've been looking at sites throughout, throughout the valley. And we, you know, drought's gonna continue to impact us and we see it first in our reservoirs. We see them drop. Jordan L right now is at fifty percent. It's not gonna get above sixty percent this year. What we don't see is our aquifers. And that's a critical resource that is, a lot of people just tap and tap and tap and they take water until their wells run dry. And what we don't wanna see happen is wells run dry. And so what we're looking at is saying, okay, we may have some winter runoff. We may have some winter flows that could be better used as direct aquifer recharge. So we can take some water, we can directly inject it into the aquifer and then pump it out at a later date. And so it's almost like looking at it as a reservoir, a storage reservoir. It's just one that you can't see, which is good and bad. It doesn't take up any space, but it's bad that we don't always have a great connection to it. Our communities have no idea what the health of our aquifers are. And so we're looking at that as a critical next step for the district. And we're looking at a lot of sites throughout Utah County, particularly in making sure that we can maintain the health of those aquifers.
So just a follow-up question real quick, cause I find this fascinating, cause we're gonna make a lot of decisions with this. But right now, I live on the American Fork River stream bed. I mean, it's a kind of a joke to call it a river, but, so there is water running down it right now that's not being used by the cities. I would think there is a balance between how much water goes down, is allowed to go down that river, cause you don't wanna eliminate all the river flow into Utah Lake, right? Is there some balance that they have to meet on that? Because that water now could be recharging in aquifer.
Yeah, and for, when we talk about our rivers and streams, a lot of what we have to meet is environmental flows. There's certain minimum flows that we have to meet. In terms of like using rivers for aquifer recharge, there, most of the water that seeps down doesn't actually make it into our aquifers. Our drinking water aquifers, like the ones that we have that we tap into in Vineyard for our CWP system, are fifteen hundred feet down in the ground. They require direct recharge. The water that's there is thousands of years old. So if we don't push it into the aquifer, I mean, you're, you're talking about thousands of years to replenish that, that supply. And so I don't know if I answered your question or not, but.
Well, I, I, my question is, is would you stop the flow in that river entirely to recharge the aquifer?
If there were not environmental restrictions on, you know, for fish flows or other habitat needs, there could be a benefit to saying, okay, especially during winter water where you don't have to meet certain needs for irrigation. Maybe there's turnouts or that maybe the golf course uses the river or whatever the situation is. When there's that, when there's those types of flows, yeah, let's use those. That's what we're looking for throughout the state is those flows that we can use in the winter particularly to recharge.
Thank you.
Can I ask, going back to the question that Councilmember Smith is discussing, so our aquifer, like if we say we have a well at six hundred feet and then we have a well at twelve hundred feet, they're tapping into different aquifers? Is, I mean, like they're two different lakes that are out there or something like that?
So that could be the case. I don't wanna say for sure, cause I don't know every, every aquifer that you're using. But generally, there's, there's different levels of aquifers and usually they're based on certain qualities. So you might have a shallow level aquifer that, for your secondary system, because the water quality isn't that great. Your, the ones that are deeper may be for your culinary. And obviously, that's why there, there're gonna be two separate ones and it's based on water quality. I don't know what, what you guys have in the city for that, but that, that's kind of what we've seen in a lot of areas that we have wells.
So do you have any measurement saying, hey, the aquifer, starting on April first, is it six hundred feet and it drops down by September one, it's down to five fifty? Is there any studies that way?
Yeah, so we do have, the state has done groundwater studies and I don't know the extent of what they've done, but we've looked at several, we're looking at some right now in South Utah County to measure those health to determine, okay, what is the drawdown throughout the year? What's reliable supply? What's the recharge throughout the year, the natural recharge? And what can we account for, for future growth and development?
Okay, thank you.
I just, I really like all these programs you have going on. And I, I think us as city council members, if we could somewhat take initiative and work with him on our own yard, so we can be examples and then kind of show citizens, hey, these are the programs available, look what I've done. And this is the money that's available to help you as well. So I'd love to work with you. We've kind of slowly been converting our yard as well and trying to save water. So it was great to have this presentation to see what else is out there that we can use.
Yeah, we'd love to help, so thank you.
I'd like to clarify something if I could. You mentioned earlier about the number of gallons saved at a, at a gas station, for example. And could you tell me that number again? Cause I just did some math in my head. Have you saved, cause I know how much vegetation there is at, let's say, our local gas station. If you could say of a hundred gallons a day, that's thirty-six thousand five hundred gallons per year, but you said like a million.
So most, so we apply, so the standard is about forty inches of water for lawn. That's the standard. Most people at their, like at a quarter acre lot, they're using somewhere between two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand gallons of water a year. Now this, this property is very large. It's like a, it's at the mouth of the canyon. It's a really large property. They had, I can't remember the amount of square footage of vegetation, but we, we made some assumptions saying, okay, if everything was turf and we applied forty-plus inches of water to that a year, and then we essentially took it down by about ninety percent was the, was the reduction in use, going from all turf to what they had put in.
So ninety percent reduction?
Yeah. In, in that commercial application. Now, obviously, in a residential application, we're showing a little bit different because there's still gonna be turf in a landscape.
What, what kind of percentages would you show in those instances?
So we're showing in residential, fifty percent.
Okay, well, that's, that's significant.
Yeah, and it's been, so right now, we're doing a study in, I wanna say it's, it's right on the border of Sandy and Murray. So we're looking at, Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District is looking at their service area to measure a new development that was put in. And there, so that we should have about two years of data at the end of this year to determine exactly what the percentage is. But early indicators are showing about fifty percent less water.
So what is the alternative? I, the graph you showed me was kinda... The graph you showed me was kind of a little bit shocking, actually, where you're looking at future demand because of growth and you're looking at a, a static supply of water. So what happens if we have continued growth and continued drought, which we probably will? Do we close the border or what do we do?
So that, for a lot of cities, that will be the limiting factor. We're already seeing certain cities say, yeah, we, we may or may not be able to develop at a sustainable rate into the future. Again, there is some available supply. We do have some growth potential built in. So for example, Strawberry Reservoir is not under full allocation. So I don't know if, if Highland City has any petition for ULS water, Utah Lake System Water, but that's water that then is available for future need, but it's already been allocated. I don't know if Highland City has any of that, any access to that water.
It just seems like contradictory initiatives where you have the state, which is attempting to mandate high density to accommodate growth and, and business expansion, but at the same time, we're saying we don't have enough water. So how are those, those seem contradictory, but they're both coming from the state.
So...
Must be coming from politicians. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, the, the, there is a balance, there's a really good balance. I, I, I will say about 60% of our municipal water is used in residential outdoor landscaping. So with high density, we will actually see some conservation because you'll have smaller landscapes. I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just saying that that is a reality. Indoor water is fairly straight across the board. It's, it is what it is. There's some small gains to be made, but the largest gains are with our outdoor landscaping, our outdoor water use. And high density does actually drive the, one of the main ways that we measure and how that graph was measured is in per capita water use. And so it does push that number down, but there is a tipping point where...
It would be interesting to see what that calculated number is in terms of Utah maxes out at 2.8 million or whatever the number is, because projections are for the population to continue to grow because it's a desirable place to live and it beats the heck out of some of our neighbors. So people are flocking here. I'm just concerned that there is a max number, but then we're going to exceed that by, because of pressure from business lobbyists or some particular groups, so.
Yeah, and, and maybe I'll go back real quick just to that graph.
The scary graph?
Yeah, the scary graph.
The scary graph, okay.
So if you look, so what's on the left, that's in acre feet and that's for the entire Utah Lake Basin, but you can also think of it as gallons per person per day. And it, in this graph, it actually works out to, to be right now, we're at about 220 to 250 gallons per person per day. In order to meet the supply on the right end, we would need to be about 170, 160 gallons per person per day. So it's not a, it is a huge reduction, but it's not like we're not having any water. It just means that we have to sustainably grow into the future to make sure that we, we utilize our current supply to the best available capacity that we have, so.
Okay.
I hope, I hope that's helpful. I hope I answered your question.
It's still scary, but I, I appreciate the response. Thank you.
I just have a quick add on question, because I, I think this is really interesting because we need to plan for the future, obviously, but more high density decreases your pressurized irrigation demand as a whole, because there's smaller lots, but your culinary water demand goes up. And in this city, our culinary water comes from wells and we've been dropping all of our wells deeper and we just are building a, a fourth well. So then you bring it out of the aquifer. So I mean, it's kind of a cash 22, it seems like.
It is a little bit, you know, we designed our secondary systems and I think Highland City was a recipient of our 207 program in, in the, probably the early 2000s where we helped subsidize your secondary system.
Right.
Why? Because it was a cheaper, you know, water that we could utilize. Otherwise, it may be unused. We still consider those to be a benefit, but we do recognize that, yeah, this is a, this is a challenge that we have to balance. We have to balance, how does that water, you know, mix with what our future needs are? And if we do have a greater need for culinary water supply, that does kind of change the dynamic for people. We purchased supply in the Murdoch Canal. We have actually a lot of supply with the intention that if things do change in 50 years from now, we can use that supply and run it through a treatment plant at the point of the mountain and provide culinary water back to communities that need it. Because, you know, we're saying there's some unknown there, but we want to at least have some flexibility to plan for that in the event that that does happen. We're, we're not wizards, but we try to predict the future as best as we can, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate, I think it's been very helpful for us, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We'll now move on to our consent items. Item number three, are there any consent items anyone would like to pull? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent items A, B, C, and D.
I'll second.
So motion made by Kim, seconded by Brittany. Yes. Okay, so Tim, would you go ahead and vote?
Yes.
Tim, was it yes? Then we can go ahead and review. That passes five to zero. We will now move on to item number four, which is the 2022-2023 Lone Peak Public Safety District Budget. Tyler, I believe you have a presentation on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with you this evening. As indicated here on the agenda, this is the council's consideration of the fiscal year 2023, that's not 2223, my apologies up there, Lone Peak Public Safety District Budget. By way of context, the district approved its tentative budget, the board approved its tentative budget last week as required by law in the, the process of developing a budget for a fiscal year. The purpose in your consideration tonight, it comes as a result of increases that are proposed in the budget that exceed cities, the Alpine City and Highland City property tax increases. And so as a part of the interlocal agreement, each city council gets the opportunity to, to weigh in on that. The district within, here coming down the pike, will, will consider the, the budget, the tentative budget for final adoption here on May 11th. So to begin. By way of overview, the, the tentative budget includes expenditures totaling that figure, you see it there, roughly $8.2 million, the breakout in administration, 284,000, police, 4.2 million, and fire, roughly 3.7. Note that administration does include dispatch, so Central Utah 911. Those assessments are, go directly to the cities and those are based on call volumes and, and do not, that, that is not shared between the two cities. We have our, our good chiefs here tonight, appreciate the opportunity to work with them and they'll be providing some information as well here as we go through the, the presentation. Our areas of focus within the budget, similar to the strategy with the Highland City budget that we discussed earlier in the council session, keeping costs at a bare minimum, increases in focusing on retaining and recruiting qualified staff. So in, in the increases, that is primarily from wage increases as well as an estimate of benefit cost increases pending receipt of formal bids from those vendors. We anticipate 10%, roughly estimated there. Couple other items to bring to your attention, under administration, those, again, those dispatch fees are assessed directly to the cities and both cities did see an increase this year. The budget reflects, under administration, an increase of 3% in salaries that has since been adjusted to 6%, but you see 3% there because this budget was, was published before that determination was made. So that'll amount to less than $2,000 difference.
Just out of, was there a study completed that would indicate what to obtain employees?
So the, the departments, yes, have done quite a bit of work in assessing the comparative salaries with, with cities around and quite a bit of movement there going on.
So is what's listed here reflective of that?
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
And then is there also a study to indicate the relative cost of the increase in wages as opposed to hiring and training and getting up to speed new employees? Is it cost effective to pay more?
Certainly, generally.
I would think so. It would be very cost effective because I know it's difficult to find good people.
Any kind of turnover, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and chiefs can, can both speak to that from, from personal experience in having to, to train and bring new employees onboard. For example, in the fire department, in addition to just training, there are costs with equipment and, and uniforms. So if we can keep, keep someone happy, keep them here with the district, great place to work. And if they, they stay here with us and don't have to, to, to buy a new set of, they call them turnouts, right, chief? New set of turnouts every six months or every year, that saves the district a tremendous amount of money.
Okay, great, thank you.
Tyler, I need some clarification.
Sure.
So you were just a few minutes ago saying that there's been some adjustments on this that you passed out where the increases are more consistent with 6%? Because what I see is 21% and 23%, I'm confused.
Yes, so this, this document, we've tried as much as we can in communicating with not one, two, but three governing bodies to keep it as static as possible. The only thing that has, that will change on here is on the second page, administration, that first line.
Oh, okay, so it's administration, I'm sorry.
Correct.
Now, on the administration, we pay it on the public safety, it's going to be increased 6%. But the administration, it's kind of a, a chargeback because then Highland gets paid for the administration. So it's, we're charging the district 6% because Highland did a 6% wage increase on their employees and we're the administration.
Correct.
Right.
I appreciate asking that, that question, Scott, that's...
No, you're talking about administration and I got thinking about actual, the police and different things. I was just a little confused because I thought maybe the figures have changed dramatically, but not really.
Right.
Okay.
So that, that one line, you, you see the difference there from 52,000 to 53, 560, double that difference and that's where we'll end up there based on the current direction that we've received. Other areas of, there's a clicker. Adjustments that you'll note, increases, again, bare minimum. Police has four replacement vehicles and their first installments on those, they show up as leases, but they are purchases. It's a capital, capital lease, so those are coming online. And fire uniforms related to, to hiring personnel and then some minor adjustments there with vehicle maintenance and some increased insurance costs. Excuse me. I'd like to give the, the chiefs an opportunity to share some information with you. As we had a, a session with the council last week regarding revenue, some questions came up with regard to the services that the, the fire and police departments provide, particularly call volumes. And so they've been good to prepare some summaries here and sharing over with you. So Chief William?
You're good. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to address you tonight. So last week, last Tuesday, both myself and Chief Patton were in Alpine. Didn't have an opportunity to protect, to attend your work session. So I took the thrilling opportunity to go back and listen to your last week's work session. So out of that work session, there were several questions that were directed toward the police department. So what I wanted to do was take a minute to address those questions from last week and then address any questions that you might have from this week. One of the questions that was asked from last week are a summary of the services. There was questions about traffic enforcement, what law enforcement, what your particular police department is doing with traffic enforcement. Coming out of, when we, when we entered into COVID in the early months of 2020, I gave my officers instructions to limit their contacts, to limit exposure to essential workers. We didn't want to, to, our officers to contract the, the virus, nor did we want to pass that along to the public and we wanted to limit our contacts. One of those things was to limit traffic enforcement and so what we did is, is we, we cut back quite a bit on that. I think if you were to poll most agencies and most chiefs, that's the directions that they went. So at the end of quarter of 2021, you're going to see on here numbers, we had a, we kind of had a department meeting and discussion about resetting some expectations and some standards about traffic enforcement as well as other things. And you're going to see the difference between the discussions that we had at the end of quarter number four of last year and what we've seen at the beginning of this year, 2022. So in, in arrests, they've been up 100% and these are mostly traffic related. Those include DUIs and things of that nature. Citations are up 109%. Violations, one traffic stop can result in multiple violations and so you're going to see a slightly larger number there in violations and then traffic stops are up 86%. So those are the numbers compared from quarter four of last year to, to the first quarter of this year. Another question that was brought up, and can you go to the next slide, please? I'm just going to give you a quick summary of, this is everything that you just looked at, plus a couple of different, different items. Total incidents that we've handled in the first quarter that are traffic related are So there, there's been a, quite an uptick in, in activity in, in traffic enforcement in the first quarter and that will continue as we move forward. There was also questions about how we do our staffing and then total calls for service. So how we do our staffing is based on best practices. So back in 2013, I attended a symposium in Boston with the, who was the city manager at that time in Alpine. We talked about how to best staff a police department. And there have been a number of different rules over the years. You staff based on population, you staff based on how your allotment of the budget that you can afford, you staff based on criminal statistics, you, there's, there are a lot of different variations of how you staff. The best and most recent best practices that have been occurring since 2013, 2014, and we were one of the first ones to bring here to Utah and I actually passed it along to a lot of my, a lot of my counterparts, is you staff based on workload and you go on what we call the 60-60 rule, which means 60% of your department needs to be allocated to patrol, the officers in the uniform, the ones that are out there responding to calls, and no more than 60% of their time should be allotted to workload. They should be available 40% of the time to answer the phone or to answer the call when somebody calls and needs services. We don't want individuals to wait very long when they call and want, need services from law enforcement. So that's the staffing that we have allocated ourselves. And currently our, our allotted staffing is at 22 full-time sworn officers. That includes myself, to the investigators, to your school resource officers, to the officers out there taking patrol, that's everybody. That includes your, your administrative staff, that includes your first line supervisors, that's everybody that's employed as a full-time police officer with Lone Peak. So as we currently are staffed, that's 22 full-time sworn, we don't foresee a need this year, obviously, and we, we take a look in years to come as we build and grow about how that workload adjusts and if we need additional staffing. So that's how we're staffed. We added, our 22nd officer, I believe it was four years ago, that we added an additional officer, we have not added additional full-time officers since then. There was also a question last week about calls for service and... last week about calls for service and how many calls for service the police department answered. In 2021, the police department answered 13,339 calls for service. That included both Highland and Alpine. Seventy-three and a half percent of that is Highland. So in the first quarter of this year, we are at just shy of 3,000 calls for service. That's down a little bit, and that can be explained by our staffing. We're currently down 30% of our patrol staffing right now. So you just don't have as many officers out there generating activities that we did a year ago. Okay, I think that answers all the questions from last year. So I'm happy to take some for this.
And I I appreciate the data here because, and I've talked to you privately in different things in our meeting and stuff, that I I just get the impression a lot of times that, and certainly it's because of the mitigating factors of COVID, that I just didn't see a lot of police officers out enforcing traffic.
Sure.
Regulations. So I'll give some other examples. So last week, when you weren't here, we had the regional director of UDOT stand up, and we were talking about the corner of 4,800 West, North County and and Timpano's Highway. And and he was, he stood there, I guess, for a long time and watched all the traffic coming from the north, which is a lot of high school traffic. And the first thing he said is it's one of the worst cases he's seen of distracted and aggressive drivers. So my question to you, I haven't, I've stood stood on that corner sometimes, but how often, for that hour or so in the mornings, do we have law enforcement present in that area, even in a police car or something that's kind of enforcing traffic regulations there? Because it seems like even if we had an officer in a car with these lights flashing or something, that it would probably mediate or mitigate, or I'm not sure the word, the word I want, mediate, I guess, some of the behavior that we're seeing there. Because I think we can spend millions of dollars redoing intersections and doing all this stuff, but unless we have a way to enforce things, I think it's hard to change behavior and especially in high school students. So how often do we have a police officer there on the corner? Do you only come if there's an accident? Or do you actually have someone stationed there in the mornings and kind of watching things and picking people up?
So to answer your question, we don't have any directed patrols in that area that we say that we're going to be there every morning during that time. There are other things that take priority than than that intersection. We try to have the officers in the school zones where we have flashing school zone signs when we have the availability to do so. Right now, we have, we're having a bit of a hard time even filling crossing guard stations. So sometimes the officers are out there crossing the kids across the street. I know Sergeant Thurston, who's sitting back here, has done that numerous times over this past year. But currently, we don't have anybody directed at that particular intersection. If it's something that they observe, then certainly they'll, they'll address it. But we don't, I I think it's fair to say that the issue does not just exist in Highland. I think if you look at the news lately, I think if you look at any other intersection, if you stand at any other intersection, you're going to see the same behaviors. I I see the same thing when I drive to and from work. And I drive, I, you know, I'm a, I'm a 14-minute commute to and from work. I know your commute's probably the same. When you get down to an American Fork or anywhere else, you're seeing the same type of behavior.
My commute's 10, 10 minutes. But the problem is, and I disagree with you on this, please, and I don't want to be disagreeable, but we have a bad intersection there where we're talking about disrupting a lot of people's homes, property, spending millions of dollars to fix. And it seems like one of the resolutions would be to have some law enforcement during school days there for that hour. And I think that is just as important as being a crossing guard. And I really think it's, I, we shouldn't have police officers being crossing guards. We should have volunteers doing that. And I know that's an issue with COVID and stuff. But, you know, that, we look at all the statistics on that corner, and there's accident after accident, distracted drivers and all this other stuff. So my opinion is that it would be helpful to have law enforcement there. And I'm kind of hearing you say it's not important. And I think that's, I disagree, especially when you're asking for a big increase in in money.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's not important. I'm saying we don't have the staff to stick out there every morning and have them be directed at that particular intersection. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying it's not important at all.
Right.
It can be mitigated, absolutely.
But it could be there two or three times a week. But it sounds like, are you ever there except for an accident?
Of course we're there. You know, we have officers drive through that intersection.
So that's just my, you know.
Yeah. So it, we don't have them sitting there at the intersection. And truthfully, there's not a lot of places to sit there where you're not obstructing traffic. So it makes it difficult to watch that intersection.
So Chief Williams, is there, we, it appears that, and and I'm, I'm probably guilty of it, that if I see, I get caught in a long line, you know, in traffic, I see the gap and so I get on my phone because I'm, okay, I've got maybe a minute and a half.
Sure.
And I'm just trying to be effective. Is there any educational aspect? I mean, the problem is not necessarily the police aren't there, it's the individuals getting on their phone or being distracted in some other way. Have you seen any effective way to be able to notify the driver about the distraction? Or, you know, if we have rabbits come chucking out at them, is that, say, hey, you gotta get going? I mean, what, what, is there any program you've noticed?
I know.
I was just thinking of jumping rabbits coming out of a hat. So is there anything that, I watch, it was just Easter and I watched them.
Yes, yes.
They fund that program.
Okay.
So what would be, is there any program you've seen that maybe could help us with some distracted driver things? Is there anything we could do that would help with that?
Yeah. So there are distracted driving, there are distracted driving shifts that are offered by the state where departments are reimbursed for going out and enforcing distracted driving. There was one done three weeks ago that we had three officers that signed up to participate, and we had to cancel because we just didn't have the staffing to do it. So there are, there are, there are ways to enforce this, and officers are doing that. But it's just, there are so many people. The frustration is, we've all sat behind a driver who's been on their phone, the light turns green, and we're five seconds for this individual to notice that the light's green, five seconds for this individual, feet, three seconds to this individual. And now, now the times adds up where you're not pushing the cars through that intersection that should be moved through. It's, it's certainly a, a problem that can be addressed. I don't.
Any other things, signage on the side that would help? I mean, other than have an officer present, is there anything else we could do to help in that area? Or in any area?
Other than what we've discussed, I don't know of any other programs right now. I would love some type of rabbits that jump out and knock on your door and say it's time to move. Or, you know, we, we remember the old car monkey, the trunk monkey commercials, right? You get out and hit your car with a bar or whatever it was. I don't remember.
Is there any suggestions? It's an agenda item about 4,800 West. And it appears, you know, we've turned down as a council, we're not looking to necessarily add two lanes to try to get the traffic. The residents have said they don't care if it backs up. Well, one, the consequence of bad backs up, it takes time to clear that intersection. And and we've tried to work with UDOT to make it free flow. And if they're distracted, also it gets the gap, and it turns the light. So you might have been going, you know, where it would have went for 45 seconds or 60 seconds straight, it turns it 20 seconds, and then it just keeps the backup. And I think that's, you know, all the concern.
I I agree. And, and, you know, we could certainly focus on that intersection. But again.
You, you have skill zones, you have.
Well, well, again, to observe that intersection is is difficult because the places that you can observe, but observe the intersection is on the, on the east side. And and the rest of it, there's not a lot of lanes there to be able to sit and observe people on their phone. I'm not, I'm not saying it can't be done. There's just challenges there.
Okay. So let me ask another question. And I'm sorry if I'm kind of cross critical because I I appreciate all the service the police give, and it's essential service for sure. But I do jog up by Lone Peak High School a lot, and we have Knight Avenue there. Three or four years ago, the city sold the school district, a lot of land for a new parking lot on the west side. And when I come up on that, and again, this is all mitigated by changes because of COVID, but we've redlined a lot of Knight Avenue. And yet I see all the students parked in the redlined area and not parking in the parking lot. Do we have a police officer that occasionally goes through there, maybe tickets people because they're sitting in a no parking zone?
Yes, we have an officer that writes parking citations there. And the kids continue to park there. I, it's a, we need to work with the school, with the school to help alleviate a lot of that. Education's a good portion of it. So, you know, the the goal is to work with the school to try and help resolve that. Citations is one small part of how we can do that.
Right. You know, and I keep advocating that we need to go and meet with the principal and the school district and things. Because I think there's a lot of things we need to do to help educate our high schoolers to be good citizens. Because, you know, I was appalled by what the administrator from UDOT said. And and I think we need to all work together. And some of that is enforcement. And and I just want to emphasize that because I was pretty appalled last week when I heard what he had to say.
I can appreciate that.
Hey, I have one last question before moving on to a motion. You said that 73% of the calls are for Highland. Do you know what percentage of those calls are just for SR92? If you don't, then.
Not, not right now, no, but I can probably get those.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Well, I have more questions. We're not on to a motion already, are we?
Is it, do you have questions for chief?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I do. So going through your budget, because I'm not on the Lone Peak Safety Board.
Yeah.
Okay. So wages, yeah, okay. So wages, you're requesting a 21% increase. And I, and you have a compelling argument that you need to be competitive with the other cities, especially in North Utah County, because you want to be able to recruit good officers. Because I understand you're losing a number because of expenses. And I, and I've never been an advocate of defunding the police or anything. But we have to, as representatives of the city residents, we have to be able to justify why we're doing this. So I think that's one good compelling argument. What I don't understand is if your salaries are increasing by 21%, why your benefits are increasing like in retirement at 30%, your 401Ks at 32%, and again, other things at 27%. So I, can you explain that to me? Because I'm not on the Lone Peak Safety Board, and I wasn't able to go.
I'm not a math guy. So I'm going to ask Tyler a little bit about how those percentages work. But I, I'm going to take a stab at a couple of things. The retirement is based on a fixed number that the state gives us. So the retirement number is a $500,000 number as opposed to a million eight. So that percentage is going to be larger, I think. Am I thinking right, Tyler?
Correct.
Because we're dealing with smaller numbers than than that initial one. So the percentage of the increase is going to be a bit larger, although it's comparative in covering those costs that we're going to need to 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 cover that benefit.
Okay. So, but, you know, as I have to explain to the citizens, most of us out in the city are not getting a 30% increase in our retirement benefits. So I'd like to understand that better, Tyler, because, I mean, we can talk about this on Thursday. Because to me, it's hard to explain to people when this is published how we're increasing benefits 21 to 20, 30%. And and it has to do, I think, with short-term and long-term employees and the state and all this stuff. But we need to be able to understand that. And I think as representatives of the citizens, we need to because it's coming out of our pockets.
True.
To pay for this. And, you know, I think the compelling argument's there to increase the size.
Can I answer that really quick? So we're not, just a clarification, we're not increasing the benefit. The benefit stays the same. To keep the benefit the same, that's the, that's the increase.
Dean, I don't understand that either. I, I guess I'm kind of dense because when I look at the budget, it says we're increasing it by 30%.
Right. And so the rate that we anticipate paying for each employee, we're estimating that.
For percentage of their increased salary, you have to pay them more benefits.
Right. And specifically with regard to medical benefits, where that shows a 30% increase, the rate we're anticipating increasing by 10%. But there is other movement in the staffing that is increasing the cost of some employees compared to where our previous projections were a year or two ago.
So Scott, let's assume we had a single employee, so they didn't have a family plan. We were paying the single way, you know, single insurance if they've gotten married or if we've had some officers come on that have a family plan. The family plan has cost us more than a single. And so it's the shifting of the staff that to be born a family plan, it sounds like. Is that my, my understanding?
It is. And I, I agree with your, your question, Scott. My, I panicked when I first saw that comparison a, a number of weeks ago. How on earth are we increasing 30% when nothing else should should drive that? I went through every single employee, and that's where we determined, just kind of the way it it fell out comparative to the year prior, and no employees getting any additional benefit than than they qualified for previously. It just happens that the circumstances where their family were were single or whatnot is just different than where that position was filled previously.
Right. That's helpful. So next question I have, and I'm sorry to monopolize this, but I've just kind of been struggling with this increase. Vehicle lease. So I'm actually the one that made the motion. I believe we passed the original public safety fee in 2019, if I'm remembering correctly. I made the motion for the $11.50 fee at that particular time. I thought we got new leases and new vehicles at that time, or around that period of time. And I'm just, I want you to just tell me why we need all these new leases. Is this, I mean, $40,000 more in leases?
They're, these are replacement vehicles, to replace vehicles that are, have come to their lives, their life's end.
And how, how long is the life's end?
We, they typically, for a patrol vehicle, they typically last about five years, or around 100,000 to 120,000 miles. It's a lot of hard stops and fast goes. They just take a, they, they get driven hard. And so that's usually what we get out of them. We have four vehicles that have, are meeting that criteria and that we're, that are starting to cost us in maintenance as opposed to replacing them.
So are your officers allowed to take their vehicles home?
Yes.
Okay. And how many officers live outside Highland, Alpine?
All of them.
All of them?
Yep.
And so that all adds to the mileage and the wear and tear and everything, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, one other question. So I was the one that asked about the ticketing and things, and I appreciate your new statistics. So in your revenue, police chief, where, I'm never quite sure when people get a ticket. And I've paid some tickets in American Fork, they're 100 bucks or more. And they go through the court system. Where does that revenue show up? Does it come into Lone Peak? Or is it just in the courts? Or where is that revenue?
It doesn't come to the, it doesn't come to the police department. It doesn't come to Lone Peak.
So it doesn't come to Lone Peak Safety. Where does that revenue go?
It's a mediocre question. I'm just kidding.
That comes through, through the court and shows up in the, in the Highland budget.
Okay. So, so the court revenue here, $500, what is that?
So that is revenue, when an officer is subpoenaed to court, he gets a nominal stipend for appearing in court.
Or being there.
Correct. That's money that the officer turns back to. He can either take that $17.50 or he can claim him his time in court. Most of the time, they turn that back in.
And tell me what police report charging is. And, you know, two or three years ago, it was $5,500. Now it's at $3,500.
So police reports, when somebody grab a request or asks for a copy of the report, whether that's a resident would like a copy of their report or an insurance company that would like a copy of the report, that's the revenue that we get from reports that we provide.
So you anticipate that basically being same as the last year or two or dropping?
Correct.
Okay. Tell me about your grants. So in the past, you've had grants of $24,000. This year, anticipating $8,000.
So the $24,000, we had a grant that came in that, well, the money that came in for the purchase of the pistols, we put under grants. So that one's a little, it's a little overinflated than what we typically get. And I don't remember, I don't know, were you aware that we had residents that donated $9,000 to the police department to purchase pistols?
I'm not. I know about the K1 because that came through the Highland Foundation, the dog.
Yeah, that, 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 we had residents of Highland that donated some money that they, they went, they came to us and asked what they could do for the police department. They were wanting to to help the police department in some way or another. They first came to us and wanted to purchase vests for everybody, bulletproof vests for everybody. And we're on a, we have a rotation that we go through, and we get grants from the federal government that picks up the most of the cost of that. So we discussed with them different things that we wanted or that we needed. We were anticipating having to replace pistols next year because we rotate through them every five years. And we, they wanted to purchase new pistols for the police department. So there was a $9,000 donation that came in toward the police department that was put into that category. So typically, these grants include anything from funds that may come in from the beer tax, and that's another discussion that we can get into probably another night just to save time. There are grants that we, I talked about the distracted driving that we talked about earlier. Those are things that are, grants that are given to the, to the department to help offset some of the costs for officers to participate in these programs with distracted driving or click it or ticket or DUI shifts and things of that nature.
Okay. So my last question, and I'm sure there's other questions people want to ask. But when we, when we met, the police chief, yourself, my, and Nathan, I asked. I asked about this increase. Do you anticipate they're going to come back and ask for more next year, or the next year? Or do you think this is going to cover us for a year or two?
I think we're going to be covered for several years to come. The idea behind this particular budget and ask was not to, you've heard the term before, come back to the well again and again and again. Because that gets tiring for me, it gets tiring for you to listen to me come back and ask for things. So this request is certainly going to get us through the next three or four years, I anticipate.
Can we quote you on that in the future?
You can quote me on anything you'd like. I might go back and deny it. He can't, no, if we go back two years ago, in the environment that we were in beginning of 2020, we probably thought that we were paying our officers commensary with what was in the market. We've now, the whole market has shifted on us. I think you were mentioning that we're down seven officers right now, with majority, I think, two of them maybe are not staying in the profession, five have moved to other agencies. You know, as the chief, you know, like you mentioned that, you know, as the request came in, the wage, the wage request, I went and jumped, and I went and saw what Orem was paying, Saratoga, Orem, Lehigh, you know, I've gone, okay, where are we at? And I'm going, for me, what the request was, and what I'm seeing is the wage, we're just trying to stay competitive, that we can hire. And right now, we're down officers. And I'm going, it's the environment we're in. And can you control in one year, do we know where it goes? I, we don't, but we're taking our best guess. Right. So, again, that's, I anticipate not having to come back. But I didn't anticipate this large adjustment coming within the last twelve months either. None of us did. And before this, back in 2020, we were competitive. We were there. We had, we had, we were full-staffed, we were able to stay full-staffed, you know, give or take one here, leaving here or there. But with this adjustment that's occurred along the Lostatch Front, and even now down in Southern Utah, we have to stay competitive. It's not me coming here because I'm trying to be greedy and saying, you know, give us the biggest piece of the pie. It's, we're just trying to, we're just trying to staff a police department.
But it was more national trends that kind of affected this. The defund the police movement and all that stuff that went on.
Everything that started up in Salt Lake City, you know, that ripple effect started in Utah and Salt Lake City. So nationally, yes, that's where it started, but it's rippled across the entire nation. Any other questions you have, Chief Williams? Thank you, Chief. Is our, would you like to have Chief Patton come up and just kind of go through the EMS budget?
Yes. I'll keep it brief.
We should have a trapdoor that just fall down.
So just kind of reiterate for the public, so it'll be on public record, the benefits of having six full-time firemen versus three plus, or five plus three, and you want six plus two part-time, is that correct?
Yes.
So you have four in each station?
Yes. The benefits, verse, when we say six versus two, five and three, that's full-time. It doesn't change the overall staffing number, which is going to stay at eight. Full-time people, we can make them come to work. They have to come to work if they want to keep their jobs. Part-time people were kind of at their mercy. They run fire schedules. Most, almost all of our firefighters are full-time firefighters elsewhere, so they're running on a fire schedule already, which prohibits them from working a third of the time anyways. And then they make their own schedules. So, and where we really struggle is spring break. We just had that one. If you have your full-time firefighters, who are my part-time staff, they're not going to come to work part-time at Lone Peak if they, if their four days off lands during the middle of spring break. They're going to go spend that with their families, or they burn vacation. What we see is, when my guys are taking vacation, that's when everybody's taking vacation. So April, May, June, the end of, you know, mid-August, right before school. We have a hard time staffing those times, and those times are also when we see our fire danger ramp up. And so with more full-time staff, we are less impacted. Instead of having potentially three spots down, and maybe a full-time position, we would have less part-time impact. And we're not going to allow for more part-time people to be off, because we've added. So our base, you know, every day outside of sick call would be five, if we do have somebody off vacation. On our holidays, you know, our main holidays, Christmas, Thanksgiving, the Fourth of July, the week around the Fourth of July, we don't allow our people off, our full-time people. So that guarantees us six, so that we can have, you know, we can staff those holidays better.
Would this be a true statement? We are staffing eight, but with the way vacations, time off, a lot of times, we're really at seven staff, because of the way their vacations are working?
Yes.
And then you have down here, a question that came up was holiday pay. Could you explain, because there was some change in how, you know, some of us are on the boards, we kind of heard that, but maybe it'd be helpful. What kind of change in how you're trying to take care of holiday?
So, back in January, we proposed that an employee who doesn't use any of their holiday time would be paid out at the end of the year, when we know that their schedule is set for the calendar year. So at the end of November, when we know what the December schedule's going to be, we would pay that day out. My full-time people, currently, the year, well, calendar year 21, they account for ninety days off in holiday time that we give our employees, that they work holidays. And they can still burn that time, so when we have our newer employees, who are trying to maybe build their vacation banks, or just flat-out don't have enough time to do the things they want to do, they're still burning their holiday time. Our, we have employees who have been here for twelve, thirteen years, who are higher accrual rates. They're burning vacation time so they don't lose it, and they're burning holiday time. They're burning time, sometimes just to burn time, and I would much prefer to have them at work. We're still paying them when they're off, and we're also bringing in part-time people or overtime shifts to supplement their time off. So I actually view it, we're probably saving money, I mean, I guarantee we're saving money if we're paying overtime, but even at the part-time wage, it's still not, and that's where you see the thirty-one percent decrease in part-time wages, is because we are, we are decreasing, we're decreasing it at a part-time position wholly, but we're also, you know, the backfill need, because we don't have as many, as much time off. And that's where we see some of those savings.
So I appreciate your explaining that. We provide fire paramedic service up American Fork Canyon.
Yes, we do.
And that's compensated from Utah County?
For structure fire protection, currently. We are, we are negotiating for some sort of medical compensation, for the medical service.
Right. And is it, if I remember correctly, you had seventy-three calls?
Yes.
Seventy-three calls last year?
Yes.
Okay. So when I look at the revenue here, on the first sheet that we were given, you know, obviously, there's two million dollars come from Highland, and one point one from Alpine, but five thousand three hundred dollars is all that comes from the county. Is that right?
That is for the structure protection. So, and they are, we've asked them to reevaluate our assessment. So basically, what they do is they look at county properties, and this doesn't, I mean, Highland, Highland City has unincorporated county properties. If that property has a structure on it that is valued at over fifteen thousand, they have an equation that they figure that they put to that building. So they take all of the unincorporated county, the cabins up in, you know, Tibblefork, Silver Lake, the unincorporated parts of Alpine, and that's how they come up with that base. If we have a structure fire on one of those unincorporated county, we can back-charge for those firefighting activities.
So how about paramedic?
Currently, we do not have any kind of base charge, or a way to charge per call. The only compensation we get is for transport, you know, for the ambulance charges that we charge when we transport for medical. But if we go up, if we go up on a call and we don't transport, say we have a medical call, we spend an hour up there at the, you know, Tibblefork or something, and we fly, so we don't get the transport, the helicopter, then we don't have a way of, and that's, and that's what we have brought to light and are trying to address, right?
So let me see if I understand what you said. So if you have a paramedic call up American Fork Canyon, and our service is the one that's responsible for that, right? I mean, that's the contract. Is that true?
No, that is not true.
Okay, so...
So, we aren't necessarily responsible for the medical. We hold the transport license, meaning we are the ambulance license. So Utah County holds the medical license in every, all of Utah County, so that they can run their search and rescue operations, which is a medical component, which has a medical component. So they can do medical backcountry.
So how much paramedic service do you do, though? Do you just wait till the county gets there for search and rescue? Or, I mean, if somebody's injured, you're obviously providing services, right?
Yes.
But you only charge for transport.
But we only get compensated, and that's really what the negotiation is. Because if we get, you know, a call up at the cave, or something, you know, if somebody goes up the cave and they have a medical emergency, that's not really a search and rescue call, they might be at the visitor's center. We don't need a search and rescue call-out for that. We go up, and if that person denies transport, then essentially, we don't, we're not compensated for that call-out. Our contention is, we are providing a medical service, and we should be compensated.
So is there, you say there's a negotiation going on about that? Because it's, I don't think the citizens of Alpine and Highland are obligated to provide free services to the people in American Fork Canyon.
I don't either.
Because when I grew up in Pleasant Grove, that used to be a neighborhood canyon, but you go up at now, I would say fifty percent or more from Salt Lake County. And I went up over the loop during the leaf season, and I think half of Utah and a third of Mexico were up there. So, you know, I just, I just think that we should be compensated for the services that we provide, and that we don't need to subsidize that. That's just, you know, if there's anything we can do as a council to kind of help promote that. Because getting five thousand three hundred dollars from the county for seventy-three runs, I don't know.
Well, and on the, on the structure side, you know, I mean, we haven't fought a structure fire in the canyon, you know, at least in the last year since I've been here. We have in the past. But, so our base rate for coverage, you know, we haven't been called out, and there is an avenue for us to bill. If we send our engines, if we send our manpower up there, we can bill for that. But we need something in place similar for medical.
But that's what we're working towards, because, you know, Scott, what you're bringing up is a very big concern that the board has been breaking up, the Lone Peak Public Safety Board. I calculate, I think going up Bay of Canyon, the call should cost about a hundred and eighty thousand. You know, and we're getting paid back fifty-three, and so you're going, because if you run up there, like when we, when we talked before, Chief, is you get up there, you have someone that's hurt up there at the lake, and you've taken all your guys, well, guess what? We're not getting the transports here. And so we have to call an American Fork or Lehigh to pick up the Highland-Alpine transport, so we don't get that revenue, and we might be up there for several hours. Yeah, we might get one transport, but we've had an engine up there, we've had our, you know, our ambulance, and then hopefully, we get a transport. I mean, really, our revenue, we're trying to get to transport.
Yes. And that is, and that is part of the, of the eight, when we, when we talk staffing. We don't, I mean, outside of we need that many people, our common, you know, what we would send up the canyon is four, so that we, that is the goal, to have eight on, you know, as a minimum, so that we're staffing, we need to protect home, Highland and Alpine, as well as capture all the revenue possible.
And Scott, I can also say, from being on public safety, that part-time versus full-time staffing is something we've been talking about for a, for a long time, and trying to make it work. Part-time, when Chief Patton took over, we were trying to do that. And so I think we've, I think that that is a good request, because I think that that just was not working.
Hey, Chief, I have a question for you. The aid provided to other agencies, that line item 103741, is that wildfire right there? And I noticed that there was a revenue, I guess, estimate built into the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So, but you will, I mean, it shows a hundred eighty-two thousand, a hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-seven thousand. So you will be making money off of wildfires. I'm just wondering where that money will be spent. Huh?
It says, if you want to commit to lighting them, I'll give you an estimate. Yeah, I mean, there, there absolutely, there's an expectation. There's going to be revenue there, but we don't, I mean, you know, a part of that is, it's not just, we have to be requested, we have to be called. Now, we sit very well, we are currently deployed in Texas.
Still?
Still. You know, we'll have forty-plus days.
Do you want me to go drive the truck home?
Sure.
Well, no, but, I mean, I think, we've had staff down there in Texas, and Texas even paid to fly some home, and I think fly others down. I mean, that's, that's the need they have, and we have a wildland interface. I guess the question is, let's just assume we don't have that revenue in our budget. What have, what historically have we done with that revenue?
So, we do wildland things with that revenue. We have supplemented structure stuff in the past, I know. We currently did radios that were multi-band radios, that were wildland and structure radios. They were funded out of the wildland side of things. The idea of that would be to fund wildland apparatus, equipment, and those kinds of things, so that the burden doesn't fall on the cities to have to purchase those pieces of equipment.
And equipment that the cities would also benefit from, along those lines. We do treat that revenue as one-time, because if we were to plan on it, and it, and we have a really green year across the country, that would be extremely difficult for the cities at that point to readjust and come up with a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars. So it is treated as one-time, and the examples that Chief shared of expenses, we would make one-time purchases, that radio, part of the ambulance.
Does it have to be wildfire, though? Does it have to be dedicated towards that, or it can be dedicated to any one-time expense?
I mean, we try to think that way, because we want the wildland program to stay sustainable and support itself with, you know, I mean, the city's going to benefit. The engine that they're out in right now was funded with wildfire, the ambulance, you know, a big portion of the ambulance, those kinds of things. So it does absolutely benefit, and as we replace wildland apparatus, that stuff will be in the city. We're not, you know, just going to deploy everything that we...
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Appreciate these, these two chiefs, and Chief Williams coming back for a reprieve.
I can answer Councilperson Roldella's question. So we had, in 2021, there are three hundred and seventy-eight calls or incidents on Tepanogus Highway, which accounted for three-point-eight percent of all of Highland City calls.
What percentage again?
Three-point-eight percent.
Good to know.
Good?
Thank you.
If we want to increase revenue, I think rabbits jumping out at people, the heart attack potential and the car accidents, that will definitely boost our call volume.
And if you do it in the canyon.
So it wasn't that wild of an idea. Okay. Is there anything else on the discussion item here for the Lone Peak Public Safety budget?
We do have a slide here that shows you the assessments. There's a lot of math that goes into it, basically, and that show the elements, population, equivalent residential units. Alpine has actually seen a decrease somewhat from the prior year.
You couldn't win all night without saying that.
What's that?
You could have won all night without saying that.
Sorry.
Being transparent.
Of this, being transparent, yes, okay.
So that's, that's the sausage a little bit about how that works out. Highlighted there for you, the assessments and the changes for Highland and the percentages there. Any questions specific to the assessments, which are the lion's share of the funding for the district? Great. So Highland, in summary, assessment in the current budget year, roughly four-point-three million dollars. That's increasing in the recommended tentative budget for the district. To that figure there, four million, nine fifty-five, and five hundred roughly. And here is the increase that that represents, six hundred eighty thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars, which is sixteen percent over the prior year. Here's some things, efforts that the chiefs have made in not only holding firm, but some reductions. You've seen Chief Patton talked about the part-time wages that are coming down significantly to reallocate to the part-time, or to the full-time. And as part of the staffing changes, we are more confident in additional revenue coming in, four hundred thousand dollars up from three hundred and twenty-five. Timeline, we've already talked about. There, here is the recommendation, of course, staff recommending the city council approve this, uh, tentative budget, and the recommended motion.
I'll make a motion, I move that the city council approved Lone Peaks Public Safety District's fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three tentative budget.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Sarah, second by Kim. Any other discussions before vote? Let's go ahead and go vote.
We are all offline here.
We are.
We're all offline? We could do a roll call vote.
Yeah, you can just do roll call.
So let's do roll call, we'll start with you, Sarah.
Yes.
Kim? I'm actually, I can't work.
So embarrassing.
I understand.
Can't believe it.
I know. So, your vote?
Yes.
Scott?
I'm still thinking.
Okay.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
That's a five-zero vote. The next item is authorization to proceed with the revenue increase, either a fee or tax, for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three in the budget. So is that you, Tyler, that's going to discuss that, or do we have anything there?
I think Nathan's leading out.
Yep, that's me.
Thank you.
Nathan. Oops, wrong button, sorry. Okay, uh, as we've discussed, uh, this evening, uh, there is a need to, uh, address additional revenue. Uh, we've talked about pros and cons of each, and we're really looking for the council's direction on, on how we prepare our, um, what's the word I want, our messaging material and citizen involvement. Uh, it's two different approaches, and looking for your direction on how to proceed.
So what I, counsel, what I, how would I like to do here is, maybe give you some, have, give some feedback. We have some public here, if any of them would like to come give feedback about the proposed of a, a revenue increase or a tax increase, being either fee or tax, and then kind of then bring it back to the council, if that's okay, so is there any discussion, we had in our work session, we talked about the three different scenarios that was presented about for revenue increase. Is there a discussion here that is need to have, what, what would be the recommendation, how you'd like to move forward?
Now, the purpose here isn't to set either one.
Is it?
It is just to set.
If it's a tax or a fee?
Yes. Obviously, we got some work to do, and, and some input from the council before we know the exact amount.
Do we need a discussion?
Well, I'm never shy of giving my opinion, but, um, I think right now, I would lean towards the fee, um, and in, in increasing the public safety fee, and I think we need to make a compelling argument to the citizens. I would support the lower fee that was in proposal number three. Um, and because I think we can make cuts in our budget, or not fund some things that can be held off, I, I think we need to keep in mind that we've got a period of rapid inflation, and gas prices are double, and a lot of uncertainty in the world with a war going on in Europe and all these different things. So I'm not real hot about raising a lot of taxes right now, because I think people are feeling kind of stressed. We do need, you know, like, to fund the increased services, or the staffing in, in the police department, and wages and things, and the fire department, so I support a fee over a tax, I think if we have to address property tax, and I've said this several times, I think we need to wait and see what the state Supreme Court does with the road fees. And, uh, at that point, if we lose all those fees, then we can talk about property tax increase, and that's my opinion.
I, I agree with Scott on this one. I agreed with the, um, number three option in the report group that we had earlier. The lower amount, keep it as little as possible to make sure our public safety is funded, cutting some things, making sure we're being responsible, so I agree with what Scott was saying.
Just since a lot of the public weren't here during our work session, what they're talking about is our current public safety fee is eleven dollars and fifty cents a month. What you're hearing when they say option three is increasing the public safety fee to fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents per month, just so you're kind of understanding what, what, what's being commented here. Brittany?
Yeah, I can agree, I can agree with Scott on that as well, but I would say, and I was actually thinking this during our work session, before Mr. Train walked in, um, his farewell address to the council, a, a couple of years ago. And I think at some point, we are going to have to admit that inflation affects the city also. And I understand waiting until we see what's going to happen with those fees, but at some point, I think it has to be a discussion.
So you're in favor of the fee versus the property tax increase?
Yes.
Okay, Kim, what's your input?
Um, I guess currently I'm in favor of the fee, because we are looking at a possible property tax increase next year, just dependent on that, um, court proceedings, and I don't want to do two property tax increases in a row. Fee versus tax, though, I have a lot of issues with it, I think it's a little bit unequitable when we do fees versus taxes, and it's not as transparent, and doesn't allow people to be able to have a say in the increase, um, in, you know, taxes that they're essentially providing to the city. Um, I actually am for option number one, of increasing that fee, um, a little bit more to cover, cover more of the public safety costs, you know, as we have Mr. Train here, and he talked about basically our growth and inflation and, um, our overworked staff. And I'd rather, um, you know, do it the right way the first time around for increasing that fee to cover more of public safety costs and taking it out on our staff, and continuing to overwork them, and continuing to not take into account inflation over a ten-year period of time.
Okay, so Tyler, can you remind, just so we, when you're talking option number one, it was nineteen dollars, what was the, the amount, was it nineteen fifty, was it?
Nineteen twenty-five.
Nineteen twenty-five?
That's correct.
Is that what it was? I mean, so the public?
Yes.
So what we'll do is on May third, come back and have a discussion on what
that fee should be.
I'm just trying to help the public, since they're here, I understand what that option one had in it.
Understood.
Nineteen twenty-five.
Okay.
Tim, what's your input?
Although I'm concerned about the potential legal ramifications of increasing taxes, I'm sorry, increasing fees, I am concerned about that, and it would be interesting to see how things shake out with the state Supreme Court on that. I think also, um, we don't want multiple tax increases either, so I agree with Kim, that it probably would be an issue of fees now, but the long-term, I think, has to involve a, a tax increase, but we need to see how things shake out first.
So you're saying you, when you say agree with Kim, you're saying kind of recommending, and now?
Trying to be vague on purpose, but.
I know.
No, I'm just kidding.
You're putting the politician, so.
No. Okay, just to kind of clarify it, I'm concerned about the, the legal ramifications dependent upon the Supreme Court decision on raising, or establishing and raising fees. But I'm also reluctant to have multiple tax increases, which we may have to do because of the potential for, well, we have inflation, it's not potential, but even greater inflation and, and recession, et cetera, so I think in the short term, it's going to have to, we'll have to look at fees, and then the long-run, solution is going to have to involve a tax increase, but perhaps not now.
Just one comment, one of the reasons I'm in favor for the lower fee now is because I do think we're headed towards a tax increase, and what I would hate to see is that we maximize the fee, that stays in place, and then we put another tax on top of that. I would rather have the lower fee now, get us to where we need to be for the short term, and then have that transparency that Kim was talking about, so our residents can weigh in on a tax and do the, the tax part appropriately at that time.
Any other discussion? If it's okay with you, I'd like to open it up to the public here, if there's any public that would like to come and comment, you see the different three scenarios there? We are talking about a tax or a fee increase, is there any input from the public that they'd like to come up? Thank you, we'll bring it back to the council, so I think, Nathan, have you got, received your direction that you were needing to be able to put on the May third agenda? I think we're looking at a fee, uh, and then we, we have those scenarios on there, so, okay. The next item is item number six. It is the safety improvement project at the intersection of North County Boulevard and Tempanogus Highway. And I believe, Andy, that is you. I want to apologize to the public, I recognize in our, in our reports that we didn't have this drawing. I'm going to let you be aware, the council has not seen. It is, we had a meeting last Tuesday that we gave some direction to staff, tried to give them some pretty good, and it was taking the drawing a little bit more, but we need to be aware that this is just a concept, that if, if this was agreed to go forward, this still needs to go back to be approved by MAG, then it goes to drawings to start, and then we will still have public comment at that time when we see those drawings, and so there's still other input that's still coming in, so. Okay, that's, Andy, why do we?
Okay, so, uh, just in a quick review, um, last week, uh, the general consensus, uh, council was, um, the, the council, uh, appeared supportive of a project that addressed the core safety issues. So we did go back to our designers and, uh, indicated, uh, asked them to, you know, as quickly as they could, put together an option that addressed the safety issues. Um, so what you see before you is what they came back with, it does, uh, fix the, uh, lane alignment issues, especially that northbound through lane that Mr. Rasmann talked about. Um, so it shows, uh, you know, basically a widening on the east side to account for, um, that, uh, lane alignment, and, uh, and then it also does continue, as all the versions have, that we have looked at, to address the pedestrian safety issue by having an increased width sidewalk on the east side, or, uh, you know, we also refer to that as a multi-use trail, but that is one and the same, it's the sidewalk and/or trail, it's just a little wider. So, uh, I'd be happy to come back to the drawing in just a minute, but we'll go to the next slide to just look at a summary of the, uh, of the safety improvements looking at, so the lanes are aligned, uh, through the intersection, as we just talked about, so that, uh, there's no transitioning through the intersection, uh, as far as you, you just drive through the intersection and, and you hit your lane, if you will. The, uh, cross-section includes shoulders, uh, we did hear that from the public, that they felt there was a need, uh, to have shoulders for both bicyclists and also for safe driveway exits. The project does include, uh, completing the two-way left turn lane, um, all the way to the city border. As you know, there's the, uh, the Maddox property that we talked about tonight, um, that's unimproved frontage, so we basically finished that section out, uh, to match what's in front of Stony Brook, and, uh, that would, that, again, was something that we heard from the public, that, uh, they needed a left turn lane in some areas to be able to turn out of their, uh, subdivision to receive the cars. So that's another safety element. As we discussed just a minute ago, the trail, the project has always included a multi-use trail, because, uh, that's one of the core safety issues, if you go out there and, uh, you want to take your family and, uh, go on a bike ride to hit the trail system, um, you don't have the facility in place, and so you've got the shoulders for the more aggressive bikers, those are the, you know, fifty-miler clubs, uh, you know, that go out and for a, you know, morning ride and ride fifty-milers, they don't want to ride on the multi-use trail necessarily, but the families, um, you know, those with small children, et cetera, they aren't comfortable on the shoulders either, and so the trail provides a area for them to be able to, uh, then, you know, ride bikes, uh, you know, just bikes, walk, bike, all forms of active transportation. And then we will, uh, also incorporate the safe pedestrian crossings that have been discussed, uh, you know, throughout, uh, uh, the various meetings that we've talked about, and so this project is entirely focused on, uh, remediating the deficiencies that currently exist for safety, and those are the major elements that are incorporated into it. Kelly, if we can go back a slide, we'll just go back to the design, and happy to answer any questions, but I think this is, uh, the, uh, safety-focused project that the council requested.
So, um, when we talked with Utah last week, we talked about having one northbound lane and one southbound lane. Does this have three lanes? I mean, it's, obviously, it's not five lanes, I think that was what the residents are most concerned about.
Yeah, we, we talked about, uh, you know, through the intersection, or, uh, I guess on the north side of the intersection, that you had one southbound travel lane or through lane, and one southbound, northbound lane, and that's what this has.
Okay.
You know, like I said, there is the one little gap in front of the Maddox property where you don't have the, uh, two-way left turn lane down the center, um, and so that is filled in with the project, but that's just consistent with the cross-section that we have now.
So, okay, so let me understand, you got it, one northbound lane, one southbound lane, but you have a center median turn lane?
Well, you have that right now.
Right.
In, in a number of the areas, you just, you just have a little gap where it's not yet built, in front of, you know, the, the Maddox property, that frontage wasn't, wasn't developed yet, right? So fill in that piece.
So, other than adding the shoulder and the trowel, you're not really increasing the width a lot?
Not, we're not increasing the width beyond what the city had already envisioned, right? So all you're doing is finishing out the section that, you, you know, if you went in front of, uh, Stony Brook, you're just finishing that out to the south, to the, to the corner, and then on the east side, the additional width that you're taking is to, uh, you know, add the trail and the, and the pedestrian facilities on the east side, put trail slash pedestrian facility, and then align lanes through the intersection.
And do you have an estimation of how much property you'll need to take on the east side?
I don't have an estimation, we got the, we got the drawing at six oh seven PM tonight, uh, you know, uh, and so, uh, this is kind of
So hot off the presses.
You know, the, the lane offset had, right, going through the intersection before, you had to move over ten feet. So you're moving the curb at least ten feet to the east, plus, you know, you're taking, uh, it were, it's a ten-foot multi-use path, so it's probably on the order of fifteen feet, something like that.
Into fifteen feet.
Yeah, but, but that's a rough number, and again, as, as the mayor indicated, uh, where we are with this, is this is a concept drawing, where we can say to MAG, okay, the city is, is very supportive of this option, we'd like to go forward with this for design, uh, for funding, and if the project gets funded, then we'll have ample time to come back and study the, you know, the design details and come up with the very specifics and, and make sure that we've, you can answer all the questions. Uh, you know, MAG has been extremely accommodating, uh, in allowing us to kind of keep our name in the queue, so to speak, um, while we get this, uh, to a point that, uh, the city can support it.
Andy, is there any impact on the west side?
I'm answered, I want to answer conclusively, um, not within Highland. You know, up to the city border, it's all, it's all
It's all on the east.
On the east side, because the main divergence in the lane is, uh, is on the east side. Now, the west side already took the hit, if you will, because the right turn lane was added on the west side, right there by the intersection, but.
Well, I, I would also just like to say thank you to staff, this has been a, a huge amount of work. Every piece of it has been responsive to the residents and the council, and so, thank you for taking the time to do this.
So I'd like to explain why we're here tonight, you know, you go, why didn't we wait till May third, give a little bit more time for the drawing? There's timing of, with, with, this is a safety issue, and so a decision had to be made, do we wait two years? But because we heard from, uh, UDOT last, when Eric came in and mentioned this intersection was in the, you know, the top twenty unsafe intersections in Utah County, we've had several accidents, I made the decision, the mayor, that we need to try to do something for safety. And so we, that's why it's here right now, I just thought, okay, we have to let MAG, they are on their, what they call their, their, uh, they're starting to prioritize their list, they prioritize on April twenty-fifth, and then it goes to the mayors that first week of, of May, and if we're not on the prior, priority, then, then we are really, we're, we have to wait another two years even, try to even submit, and we are getting nervous that there might be some down in the south county, as they start to grow, we'll start to also submit more. But what, so Andy, my understanding is, what we heard last week is the northbound lane is ten feet off. This takes care of that ten foot off and makes it a straight shot through.
Correct.
We heard the southbound lane is four feet off, this makes it line up, and so we don't have the four feet off, right?
Yes, uh, it does, they, it, they, the instruction to designers, uh, was to fix all of the, uh, lane alignment issues, so that the intersection complied with the current UDOT standards.
So now, when you talk about the multi-use trail on the east side, there is a sidewalk that's there currently on some.
In some areas. You don't really have it.
I understand you go by the powerline corridor and you go up by 11-200, and, you know, only Stony Brook has it.
Right.
But the trail, the sidewalks will be replaced. There will be no sidewalks. It will be this trail.
Yeah, the sidewalk, the trail is essentially the sidewalk. It's just wide enough that you can either ride as a family, as a group, or that you can pass, right? Because one of the problems is if you're on a sidewalk and you're riding bikes, et cetera, you can't pass each other, you know, going opposite directions. I guess you can pass, you know, go in the same direction too, but you can't pass each other opposite directions. And so that is one of the core missing safety elements in this, in this intersection, is if you want to take, and I, I highlight the families just simply because, like I indicated, the, the more aggressive bikers, those are the ones that are on the roads and on the road shoulders, but usually if, if a, a, a group of varied skill levels are going out, they aren't comfortable on the shoulders. And so, you know, you're down to kind of trying to make it on partial sidewalks as we have it, or just not going, right? And so that fills in and provides that element for that element of the traveling public that wants to be able to get down to the rest of the city's trail system, but doesn't have a safe way to do it.
But then you're mentioning that right now we have a northbound lane, southbound, but we have a turn lane right now, and there's no other change. We're keeping, there's not two southbound lanes going south.
There's not two southbound lanes.
There's one turn lane north. Now, as we go up, what you're talking is there's center lane. In a sense, you have still one going north, one going south, but you're talking about making sure all the way past 11-200 that we still keep the gapping, that there's now a center, if it be a pullout lane or a turn lane.
Yeah.
In, and that's going to go. And right now, you see, I can, in front of Stony Brook, I don't think it's striped that way.
It's not striped that way because the, the property north and south of Stony Brook didn't have it. So if you go out there actually today, you'll note that Alpine's actually working on adding the curb and gutter just north of Stony, Stony Brook, because they're trying to address some of the issues. You know, if you're turning out of Healy Boulevard, you don't have a turning lane to receive you because there wasn't the ability width-wise. And so the only reason you don't have it painted in front of Stony Brook is because you didn't have it either side of Stony Brook. So this would fill in that width up to Stony Brook to allow that to run continuous and allow those that are trying to turn out of those subdivisions to have, you know, a left turn receiving lane.
Council, we, once again, we mentioned that we're allowing the public that's here, if they'd like to come make comments on this, this specific thing. Is there anything you'd like to interject before we have to open up?
I just want to interject that, just to reiterate that this is not a final concept plan that will be, that we are saying, yes, this is the final plan that we're going to do. This is something that we're saying, hey, MAG, go ahead, look at this plan, analyze it, come back and give us your best design. And so this is not something that was thrown together last minute. It's more of, now we're giving you guys permission to really delve into this, look at it, and give us your best design.
Yes, correct.
And we can pull out at any time. I mean, American Fork actually pulled out on Alpine Highway. It was approved to go down, you know, right, because it was approved with all those houses, and they had never moved forward with their plan, even though they got approved. So, anyway, Scott.
So, though, just adding on to it, Councilwoman Rodella said, though, I don't think we anticipate that MAG will come back and say you need a five-lane road. Because that's, I mean, as the council, we said we support one lane north, one lane south, a turn lane, but, you know, we don't want MAG to come back and say, we're going to put in a five-lane road.
So what I think the response to that is, is you heard Eric Rasband say last week that the, the department is never going to force a solution on a community that they don't want, right? And Mountain Land is, is very much the same. They're there to serve the public and serve the needs of the public, and if the local entity says this is not a need we have, neither UDOT or Mountain Land is inclined to come and say, no, you're going to receive that need. You're, you know, they, they are, they listen to us just like we listen to our residents, right?
They'll give us the bless, the best plan they can under these parameters.
Yeah, well, and MAG, MAG is just a funding agency, right? Ultimately, if we receive the funding, then we hire the designers and, you know, we go to work, you know, doing the detailed design plans, you know. So, so MAG controls the funding. They help the collective planning of the area, but ultimately the detailed decisions come back to us in this case.
Okay.
Well, Scott, let's go to your five lane. Mountain Land Associated Government will not consider it because it's not in our transportation plan. We're not changing our transportation plan. That was what they were saying. If you want that, you have to make that change in your plan, and it, and it has to be voted on by a council. If we want to make this change at this intersection and have the safety trail, we have, they are looking for a vote by the council. They do not want to get caught in the public, you know, for, they want to know that they're having support of the public officials at that time. And, and how it goes, so the mayors are the ones that sit on that board and vote it. Is that, and so, and so that's...
Well, I just wanted it clarified.
And I think it's very good. I think that was a great question, because that could be a fear that, hey, we've been, it's that hidden agenda, you know, so I appreciate you asking it. So if it's okay, I'd like to open it up. If there's any public that would like to come up and make any comments or ask some questions, we'd like to open that up at this time.
My name is Stephen Stowe. I live on SR 92. My mom's on 4800 West. You guys all have heard that. I'm the one closest in this room to that intersection. Didn't receive a notice. I was glad that somebody got an email, my mother, to tell me about this tonight. I'm a little concerned that there's nobody else that, I don't know what the, I've, I've heard that there should have been some more things put out there. First of all, I want to thank all of you, because you're here and you're doing this. I think you're crazy, because I don't know how you guys do it. I really don't. I appreciate all that, your efforts. I appreciate all that you do. And I'm thanking you now for that. I am concerned about them turning around and changing different things. I'm glad that, you know, it can't be a five-lane highway, but it can be, you know, a three-lane plus, plus, plus highway. I, I mentioned it weeks ago. When they changed that intersection the last time, they promised certain things, and they did certain things. And we told them then, it doesn't line up. This intersection doesn't line up. It's not, there's all these problems with this. And so they made that turn lane on the west side of 4800 West going southbound, and they made a great big long turn lane, and now they've let all the arrows and everything disappear so that instead of this big, it is now this big. In this area, chief, there's plenty of room to park because there's panhandlers that park their, their vans, and they stay there all summer. They've already started. And they park there all the time. You are more than welcome, because in the past, they have, the police have parked in the dirt road that's next to my mother's house, and there's, there's a double-lane dirt road there, and they park. I don't know if that's possible for, on private property. It probably isn't now or whatever. I know we got people upset at us that we were letting you guys do it. We weren't letting you. You guys were just, at that time, doing it. But anyway, you're offered. Because, because, you know, last week, the UDOT guy did not say that this was a safety issue. He said it was a structural issue. And it was pointed out by Councilwoman Bills that exact thing, that it wasn't a safety issue. This was a structural issue. All my family wants it to be is safe. And we appreciate those efforts. I do not have, know how you guys can vote on this off of that picture and the description that has been given today. I live there, and I'm not exactly sure what was said on some of that. It was rushed. I understand the timing. I understand, I mean, it went, you know, MAG money was last month, and now it can be this month, and maybe it can be next month. I don't know. But it seems like this has all been, been really, really rushed. The UDOT gentleman last week, I get, and I asked him out in the hallway afterwards. I said, so which plan did you say you endorsed? Because you said you endorsed the plan that was presented to the city. Well, there were three different plans presented, and I still don't know, Andy, if the, you know, you mentioned crossing and that. I don't know if that put an island out in the middle of the road again. I think that was one of the things up by Stony Brook, that there was actually going to be an island out in the middle of the two lanes going in there. And that was presented the same week, that there was a problem out in Saratoga Springs of an island and two brother and sisters. One was, I know, killed, and I'm not sure what happened to the other one. I don't think that's a great idea. Make it safe. Make it usable. We don't have to solve Alpine's problems. We don't need to make a bike lane for Alpine. We don't need to do all the stuff for Alpine, but we do need to do it for our citizens. And there's a lot of people that are here that live on Stony Brook and everything, and they need to come out and, and do those things. I really do appreciate it. I think this is a good direction. I, you know, I, I'm concerned that it isn't set in stone. And I understand why it can't be, but I'm also concerned that we're turning stuff, something over to somebody that will take control, just like that lane in front of, among that turn lane that was absolute waste of money and time and effort, and it, and it showed. And yet, those are the same people that are doing the studies that we're relying on this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. I know I've, I know the time is short, but my name is Rochelle. I live off of Stony Brook. I've met many of you. I've talked to many of you. My husband and I own a design build firm. I'm going to say what I said again. We have to have the plan before we submit to the city to get a building permit. I know I've heard Andy mention that we have the flexibility to work with MAG. But what I will tell you is what I've seen when I lived in Sandy with Wasatch Boulevard. And I will point you to that specific, and I'll even email you the article, where Cottonwood Heights has now lost control of what is happening in their own community because MAG has come in, taken over, and they're putting a bigger road in on Wasatch Boulevard. People are very upset. It's part of their master plan. I'll send that article to you so you can see. But I'm worried that we're going to lose control if we give the design without it being more solid. I appreciate that we have not passed our bylaws to change our road requirements, but I am also here to offer some solutions. What I did hear is that we maybe should look at automatic traffic cameras. In California, where we worked, there's red light cameras, and there's also distracted driving cameras. If we're talking about automating and needing to not have our, our staff sitting at the corner, could that not be an issue? Could that not also add to our revenue? And the other thing I will also mention is that in Alpine, the traffic speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour. The police force also mentioned that we are the larger, we're having more service calls, traffic violations, I think because of that fact. I think that is something that we could look into, would add to our safety. I know we're a commuting city. There's a lot of commuting roads where that might be an issue, but we don't see that issue from Alpine to Highland. Why can't we continue some of that speed reductions? I just think it's something that we should maybe look into. The other thing is I, I am concerned with the future development. If you guys are familiar with Entrata Group in St. George, they own about five hundred-plus acres now in Alpine, or, excuse me, Alpine and Draper next to Three Falls. I think that is something that future planning is going to cause an issue for our little road, and I'd like to address that future issue if it comes up, when the development comes up, so that we don't have this again happen where we're just pushing something down the road. I don't want to grow our road. I'd like to look at another exit and entrance into Alpine. Why are we having to do that if those investments are going to come future? I think that that should be something that you make the developers come in with funding on, not us as cities and communities where these roads are already maxed out. That's my two cents. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate you guys.
My name is Spencer Robson, and I'd just like to thank you for staking with the three lane. I was thinking I'd be coming here, and it's not going to be trying to slip what could go by. And so I just thank you for listening to our concerns and staying with our concerns. Thank you.
Hi, sorry. I'm Tatiana Lindsey, and I live in Alpine on 342 Carlisle Avenue. And I agree, I do want to thank you for everything that has been done and everything that has been listened to. I was really pushing for the multi-use path. My, my only concern here, this, I mean, this looks great. It's, it's a really small drawing, but it looks great. But from the begin, and I'm new to all of this. I'm really, I'm really trying to learn as much as I can here, but I mean, I kind of have whiplash in a lot of things that are happening. I go to Alpine City Council meeting, and they're repealing the ordinance that they changed. I, I come here, and you guys are still pushing forward with this. And, and from what I understood was there was a specific date that it had to be turned in by, and then we voted against it, and that date passed. And then as residents, we kind of thought, okay, we probably have a year to eighteen months here where we get to do some research, where we get to figure some things out. I know I told you in the last meeting that I had contacted UDOT, and they called me back, and they had changed the light from forty-five seconds to sixty seconds, and had seen improvement, but had seen that there were some distracted drivers. So I, I felt like there was already some progress being made. My only, my true concern here is that at the beginning, it was, it's five lanes all the way to the roundabout. You have to change your ordinances. You have to vote on all these things. And then it got cut down to, oh, it's five lanes to here, and then three lanes, and then, and now Alpine's repealed everything, and we're still able to push forward with it, but we don't have the exact measurements. We don't know what the short shoulder widths are. We don't know how much we're taking from residents, how much we're not. And it just, it still just feels rushed, and it, it's a little concerning. But I understand that there's a safety need, and I understand that I could be very naive in my fears. But just as a, a young mom who, who loves her house, I love where we live, and I want my, I want my kids to grow up here, sorry, but it scares me what the future holds when we rush on things. So I could be really naive in thinking that, but I just want to make sure that I do my part to make sure that, that I, that I advocate for my kids, and, and your voices are so much louder than mine. So I just hope that, that you're able to ask the questions and get all the information needed before it's handed over to anyone. Thank you. Sorry.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go ahead and we'll bring the discussion back to the council. Is there, and maybe, there's a couple of things to, now, Andy, you made one comment that if, even if this is approved by MAG for funding, you're saying that it's Highland City that hires the design engineer?
Yeah, that's, I know that everybody, I do want to clarify one point. I don't know what's happening in Sandy, but MAG is not the administrator of any funds outside of Utah and Wasatch counties. So I don't know what's happening there, but that's, doesn't have anything to do with MAG. The second point, what MAG does is they fund projects at the city's request, right? Cities come to them and say, hey, we've got a problem, and we want your help in solving the problem. MAG says, okay, you know, your project's one of the top twenty projects, and so we're going to fund it. After that, they say, city, you go hire a designer, and, you know, you work through the project, right? So let's go back to 6800 West. We'll have them on 6800 West. Well, we hired a designer. We had to go and do all the right-of-way acquisition. We had to, you know, pay for that money. We're taking the lead. We're administering the contract. All we got from MAG slash Utah County in that case, because MAG does administrate some Utah County funds too, is money, right? We're still in the driver's seat, and that's why I say, MAG slash UDOT, while they're there to serve the people and meet the transportation needs, they don't force solutions that the locals don't support. I mean, that's why you heard Eric, you know, divide the issue between capacity and safety last week. And he said, okay, well, if the real concern of the community is safety, let's address the safety part, you know.
So that was, so Eric Rasband's whole purpose to be invited last week was to discuss specifically about the safety. And what I heard him talk about was that how the lanes don't line up and the safety issues. We had several accidents. We had our police chief come and give us reports about this intersection and about the different calls. We had Eric Rasband talk about the punch, you know, the pinch points where we're seeing the accidents and why it's not a safe intersection. So now it's kind of be, how come we're here when we heard, you know, MAG said, hey, it had to be, I can't remember what the date was in March. When, when we did not pass it, what the conversation... When we did not pass it, what the conversation, what we did not pass was the five lanes. What we kept hearing from the council is they needed more information to be able to make a decision on safety. So when we got ahold of Mountain Land Association of Governments to let them be aware that we were not going to be submitting the application, they encouraged us to still move forward to come, and if the council was looking for safety, to get ahold of UDOT, which we did, where there was meetings to come in and say, okay, what's the safety issue? We talked to the police chief. We had then Eric Rasband come last week to talk about what could be some of the safety issues and how to address it. This specific for me is, as a council, the decision is, this is gonna have to be done sometime. Do you want, to me, it's a safety issue. Do you want to wait two years to resubmit to the Mountain Land Association of Governments? Or because they told us to go ahead, because it was a safety issue, to go ahead and still submit? But right now, because it's on, they will not move forward past the 25th when it goes to their ranking unless we've told them we are amiable to moving forward. To me, it's a safety issue. And so we can wait two years. I've always said, I don't want to get that call, and I say, I told you so, we should have done something. So I'm trying to say, I'm not waiting for that call. I've been working with Eric Rasband, we're trying to address safety, but it's now up to you as a council, what you'd like to do.
Can I, and I appreciate your comments, though. Let me just kind of segue off what Mr. Spencer said. I think we have an example in the city besides 6800 West. We have Canal Boulevard, East-West Corridor. So that road was basically designed by the city. It's a city road now. UDOT built it using MAG funds. But in the end, there was a lot of, mainly input from the city. And it's a two-to-three lane road, except the intersections where it's wide enough for turn lanes. So I think what you're saying is the city will be in charge of the design of this road, not MAG. Now, I will say that MAG, which is kind of the funding arm of the county for transportation, did have some say on the East-West Corridor. The county engineer insisted on some things because I tried to suggest some other different things. So there is some input from MAG on the design, but I think by and large, we'll be in charge of the design, right? And I think what you've heard and what you're trying to do is keep what we heard people say, we're worried about safety, we want bike path or path on the east side, we want it kept to two lanes, and fix the alignment. And that's what I'm hearing. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, what we try to do is take all the collective comment we received, take the comments from the council, and come up with a concept that we could turn into MAG to say, okay, this is the project the city supports, this addresses what has been pared down to the core need.
So some of the fears that we're hearing really won't happen. I mean, because we're gonna be in charge of the design.
Yeah, you're not gonna lose control of the design. You know, you, you bring up a point that certainly these agencies, you know, have input on it still, but city's in the driver's seat. When you get these projects, the city is in the driver's seat. On the city roads, if you're talking about an improvement on a city road, neither MAG nor UDOT is going to, for lack of a better word, force a solution on the city on a road that is a city road.
And the only way it could become a five-lane road is if we changed our general plan, which we voted down.
Correct.
That change, okay. So I think there's some safety in that.
And if I may add a comment off of Councilmember Smith regarding the legal aspects of the taking of property, that was also for Canal Boulevard, all the city. It was the city engineer and Nathan and I who sat in multiple mediation sessions with the property owners, and it was the city who drove all of those processes regarding what property is being taken, what accommodations the cities were going to be making in terms of improvements on property and all of that. That was all negotiated by us as city. We were supported with the funds, obviously, but we were controlling that process.
I guess I just want to comment that I am for moving ahead on this proposal, especially after hearing the safety concerns that were discussed last Tuesday. This is in the top 20 of the most unsafe intersections in Utah County. And it was interesting, one of the residents, who was here last week, that was from the neighborhood, actually his wife got sideswiped in the same intersection, and we've had multiple accidents just within the last two weeks. So just on that alone, I think the fact that this is in our control, that we will be approving all aspects of this, I would like to move forward with it.
So I agree that I would also like to move forward with it. I would say, I appreciate the concern that government changes its mind a lot, and that sometimes we have to revisit decisions as we're sadly going to find out in our next item. You know, sometimes you just have to think things through again. It's interesting because I feel like we've made a little bit of a full circle, because the first meeting that Kim and I went to with some residents, we heard, and I don't remember Tatiana, if it was you or not, talk about your kid who would sometimes wander into the street. Was that somebody else? Somebody was talking about their child who would wander into the streets, and then they were talking about how much more dangerous those fast intersections are in those fast roads than the slow ones. And I've been paying attention to this intersection now for a while. I have three, almost four teenage drivers, and ever since we've had these presentations, every time I drive past that intersection and see an accident, and it's often, all I am doing is hoping it's not my kid and hoping it's not anybody else's kid who was in a serious accident on that fast road. So to me, it's a safety issue, and I don't want to wait two years to address the safety issue. It will take two years to come up with a plan anyway, and this is not something that's gonna happen tomorrow. So I am in favor of continuing with this plan and making sure that we have control over where it goes.
Any other comments you would like to make, or we could make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay. I move that the city council approve the updated intersection concept drawing presented and proceed with the Mountain Land Association of Governments' application for funding of necessary safety improvements at the intersection of North County Boulevard and Timpanogus Highway.
I'll second it.
Second and thirded. I'll give it to Scott, if that's okay. So I have a motion by Kim, second by Scott. Are we ready to vote? Okay, Tim, would you go ahead and, what was your vote?
Yes.
Okay, we go ahead and reveal. That passes five to zero. We do appreciate all the comments from the residents. Hopefully you feel like I understand the process, but you can see that we really modified from what was proposed back at the 1st of March, and we tried to be really sensitive there, but I appreciate all the input. So I know the council's appreciated it too. We will now move on to item number seven, which is the construction contract for Mountain Ridge Park Phase One Improvement Project.
Mayor and council, as we discussed last week, we have received bids for the Phase One portion of the Mountain Ridge Park. These bids include, cover what's shown in red and blue on the drawing that we're looking at. It's the primary parking lots, the frontage improvements, and all of the core utility improvements to then be able to plug in a restroom and other facilities in the park. So I know that it's just the, you know, first phase of many discussions yet to come on Mountain Ridge, and there are many things yet to be figured out, but this is what will be the building block for the balance of the park as we continue to make decisions throughout the balance of this spring and this year. So we would recommend to you Stratton Bratt Landscapes for award of the contract, and that would be per the council's recommendation last week to award all three phases, so the complete parking lot package, if you will, that you see highlighted on the screen there. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Did you have a question, Councilmember Smith?
I think it's interesting, and I'm sorry the one to lead out on all this stuff all the time, but I just want to state a conflict of interest. So the Bratt family have been friends of mine for many years. The originator of this firm was actually a close friend. He taught me in seminary a couple of years. He started this company working in the summer months, and he passed away about three years ago, but I've known this family. The family, when they used to do residencies, actually landscaped my yard, and they do many commercial things now, and I'm not directly involved with the company anymore, but I know a lot about the Bratts and the way they do work and their high quality. And so I'm gonna excuse myself from the vote because of my close relationship in the past with this company, but at the same time, I'd like to say that they do high-quality work, and I was pleased that they were the lowest bidder. One other thing I'd like to say, that we had CUP here who presented some funding that we need to go after, that leadership grant, and we need to use some of that funding for this first section, because that's what we're doing, is the park strip and all the things that they suggested that they had funding for. So let's go for it.
Yeah, Kelly and I were texting about it while he was presenting, so we'll start on it. So if there was a motion, do we need to include that? Is there something we need, Nathan, is there anything we need to include in the motion that we want to go and seek? If that was the council's decision to move forward about doing that?
For this, if you, if you want to.
I mean, we all want to save money if we can, so.
If you want to, we understand that, and we'll get moving on it. It's kind of a little separate than this.
Scott, what Bratts are they? What's their first name?
The originator was Ross Bratt, and then his oldest son is Perry Bratt. He signed the contract. And the next son that works there is John Bratt. There's a third son, Lynn Bratt, who is in a different landscaping.
Okay, 'cause I know Lynn Bratt. He was my bishop. You know I know someone.
Know everybody.
So the guy that spent the bid was your old bishop?
Lynn Bratt was my bishop.
But he's not part of that firm now.
Okay, so I don't have to excuse.
So you don't have to recuse yourself.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not recusing myself, so I move that the city council approve the contract with Stratton and Bratt Landscapes LLC and authorize the contract amount up to $2,95,416 for the Mountain Ridge Park Phase One project, including bid alternates one and two, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract documents.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Tim, second by Kim. Are you ready for vote?
I think Tim voted for it since he made the motion.
But yeah, Scott, do you?
I recused.
Okay, so that was your?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. That passes four to zero with one recuse. Okay, we now move on to the next item, it's item number eight, consideration of amendment to number one, the amendment number one of the development agreement with Mill Haven Development LLC. That is Andy, I believe.
Yeah, that is me.
Hold on one second.
Oh, sorry.
Can we skip that to allow Todd to get back? I think everyone here would love to have that skipped so they can, we can move forward. We will now move that to the back of the agenda. Is everyone okay with that by moving the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. We will now move on to number nine, which is discussion encroachment policy. I believe, Rob Patterson, you have that?
I do, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a draft encroachment policy. It's no way intended as a necessarily final document. This has emerged out of rounds of discussion by the committee that was formed regarding encroachments, based on some initial thoughts that was sent out or circulated between them. The policy has basically three main sections. One, just outlining the purpose of the policy, explaining that this is a policy designed to protect Highland City's way of life, including its open space and kind of low-density feel. A second section that describes the types of encroachment we're looking at, explains what encroachments are, what public property is, and what the city is concerned about regarding encroachments. It also addresses maintenance and what has been termed encroachment agreements. That has come out of the committee as kind of the new form of the maintenance agreements going forward, where it's tweaked a little bit, shortened timeframe, potentially additional conditions on the approval. We don't have a final version of the encroachment agreement. This is anticipating that would come out if that is the direction the council wants to go. And the final section of the policy, that is, again, just a draft, is the encroachment compliance or enforcement process, where it encourages first, all residents to engage in voluntary compliance, where they check their boundaries on the county website, check their parcels, and then it outlines the city process, where the city would send out a notice as it becomes aware of encroachments, ask for a voluntary compliance, either through removal, through a plan, set up with staff, or through the execution of an encroachment agreement subject to terms that the council will approve. The final section is just a standard legal disclaimer about the city's retention of its rights. The goal of this is, again, it's a discussion, there's no action necessary. There's been a lot of discussion, and I'm sure there will continue to be a lot of discussion. This was kind of the first attempt to put pen to paper on what a policy for the city might look like for encroachments.
So Brittany, you've been kind of, you and Sarah have kind of been leading the committees, and we've had the committee report back here. Is there some things you'd like to share as we begin, or?
Yeah, this is the worst idea I ever had, was to get involved in this. It's a disaster. I think our new policy isn't going to be a disaster, but like, the current situation is difficult and so many, there's so many complications. So I guess I would just want to start by explaining why this is something that we're talking about now. We've had a couple of instances lately where the city has needed to access its own property and has been unable to because people have encroached on city property. And as a member of the city council, I think our responsibility is to monitor taxpayer funds and taxpayer resources and property. And we've got a lot of taxpayer property in the city that is being used for personal benefit by a few, and the policy has been inconsistent in the past. I think that the fact that the policy has been inconsistent in the past is not a reason to say that we aren't allowed to do something differently now if we think it is in the best interest of the city. I think there was a fair amount of, little bit of angst that went out with that letter, so I just want to clarify with that letter. The intention was that we were starting to see people building outdoor projects in the spring that were encroaching on city property, and we wanted to make sure that people are aware that you can't build on city property. You can't build on your neighbor's property. You can't come take things in my house without a key. So it's just, this is city property, it's taxpayer resource, and we have to, I think we have to be good stewards of our land. We'll never have more, we're likely to have more money than we are, more land. That being said, with the letter, I would also want people to know that this is something we're still working on. We're not saying that we are going to tear out every, or ask you to tear out every piece of grass along a trail. Things that keep Highland beautiful and that contribute to the city, I think we need to talk about. I just think that public property, the primary benefit, needs to be to benefit the public. So I guess that's kind of all I wanted to say. There are lots of things we've talked about, just back and forth over the last two years, I would say even. I think this is a starting point. It's not where we're ending, so I'm happy to take feedback, and I'm happy to hand over the reins of the committee to whoever volunteers next.
And there are no volunteers.
Scott, I have one vote for Scott.
Another motion.
No.
So I know, yeah, I want to hear what you guys think, but I think it's taxpayer land.
I just want to tell you, thank you. This is not just something that took an hour or two. This is emotional. This is, you had a committee that you brought together, and I don't know how many meetings you probably, I think I attended two or three, but I think you'd had three or four before then. Sarah was very involved with also this. I appreciate both the council members that kind of took the lead. This has been a concern upon where people have encroached on city property. This has been a concern upon where people have encroached on city property and that, but is there other input? You know, one thing, you know, if we're going to start looking at this, there's some things, and I know talking about the council, we need to decide, is it, you know, is, are we going to be amenable, if there's, at the encroachment, are we going to look at maintenance agreements, or if they're called an encroachment agreement, or what the name might be, are the council agreeable to having maintenance agreements? If that's the case, then that might be one option for some of those, and we have to come up with the criteria, what would constitute why they, we would grant a maintenance agreement.
So, okay, go ahead, Sarah.
Well, I think, excuse me, on the maintenance agreements, we as a city need to look at each property and decide which properties would benefit the city for an encroachment agreement. So, independent of if there has been encroachment, or if there has not been encroachment. So, we need to objectively identify each parcel of land that is city property and say, does that benefit the city to enter into an agreement with the homeowners in that area to maintain or otherwise, you know, mostly maintain that area? If not, then those parcels should not be eligible for an encroachment agreement. If yes, then the homeowners can decide if they would like to enter into that or not.
Sarah?
Yes.
Is there some kind of quantifiable or some sort of methodology to determine that? Because I can just imagine a packed house, and everyone, of course, is thinking that they're being discriminated against somehow. Why did they qualify and we didn't?
You know, we don't have anything currently, and maybe that's something we need to come up with. But I do think that as we look at these parcels of land, we can set forth the precedence or the justification of why we think that piece should or should not be eligible. So, for example, my home backs open space. It's a park-type area. I know some of my neighbors have said, hey, we would love to expand out. Some have some playground equipment and some slides back into the park area. So, we have to say, does that benefit the city in any way, shape, or form? If it interests, no, then we probably need to say that area is not eligible for an encroachment agreement. Or another place we might say, here's a place next to a trail that is full of weeds, and we want it to be beautified, and it's in our best interest to set forth some requirement for how that beautification takes place, so we don't use more water, so we have a standard within the city of what the homeowner can do. And we can say, now that really benefits the city and the other residents of the city using that trail.
Without some sort of implied claim to ownership?
Correct, without, yeah, and that would have to be written into the encroachment agreement, that there's no implied claim, the city can use that and reclaim it at any time that is needed. That has to be very clear. And they have to stay within the stipulations that the city has set forth for what that means. Does that mean they can build a shed? Probably not. Does that mean...
I can see how this would be very challenging.
It's a challenge.
To set up something that was, you could define, was quantifiable and fair and consistent, it would, this, boy.
I tell you, it's been tough.
I think Brittany's definitely the person for the job.
And Brittany's done an amazing job, and how she presented it tonight, you know, really a lot of kudos to Brittany for making this.
Absolutely.
It is not easy, and it is emotionally charged. And when you step back and look at it objectively, and then you see, you know, something happening in the city, and you think, oh, I do not want to have that conversation with the homeowner, and yet you have to step back and look at it.
But I just don't see how it's, I don't mean to sound insensitive, but how is it so emotionally charged if someone purposefully encroaches on land, makes some sort of ownership claim, and then complains when they're called on it? I don't really know how that's an emotional issue.
Well, for me, I certainly feel empathy. I think some inherited the problem, so some didn't own the homes when they moved in, and they...
Yeah, but they should have known that when they purchased the property.
They've been over all of that.
I know you have, I know you have.
But there's still some empathy there, and I think that's warranted as well.
So, what I'm hearing from the council, the council is amenable to looking at a maintenance agreement, or it can be called an encroachment agreement, and if we can come up with some type of format, the council is okay in looking at maintenance agreements. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, but if it's egregious, I think there is...
For specific properties.
Okay. I think if it's egregious, there needs to be some sort of an arrangement, like some sort of a lease or rental or something.
Well, why don't we have Scott, I think he wants to talk about the maintenance, and then we'll go to your comment about the lease or sell.
So, you know, I really appreciate, one, I appreciate all the work that Brittany and Sarah's done on this, and it's a sticky issue. I mean, we've, we've been kind of kicking the can down the road for many years, not knowing quite what to do about. But I, and I've said this, I talked with Brittany quite a bit last night about this. Rob, you know, I was pretty sensitive about the term clamor, and wanted it to be referred to, and that's a good legal term, and it's accurate. But I think it's better if we want to be, if we want the staff and the council to be on the same team with the residents, that we be careful with the nomenclature we use. And I have a problem of renaming maintenance agreements as encroachment agreements. Now, that's, it's legally true, but maintenance agreements, the term sounds much better to me and much more friendly. So, I helped craft the first maintenance agreement, okay, many years ago. And the maintenance agreements came to pass for the following reason. The city has all this open space, and most of it, and most of the problem is in the open space neighborhoods, which has been kind of a controversial thing for years. So, we allowed people to build these big homes with no yards, and then we charged them this fee on a monthly basis to quote, "maintain the open space," but that set a lot of expectations that people would have landscape trails and some of the open, or a lot of the open space would be landscaped. Now, that's not practical, we don't have the funds to do that. I understand all the arguments, pro and con. But I think, and my feeling still is, is next year if we have to raise property taxes, I get rid of the open space fee. It's been nothing but a problem all the years. But I would not refer, I think when I read through this, I kind of thought, well, we have a choice of being an Old Testament city council or a New Testament city council. And I think if we're the New Testament city council, and I'm sorry, I'm probably not supposed to bring religion in here, it seems to me that we should be making this a positive document where we work together with the community. Now, I'm totally opposed to this blatant encroachment, where people just go out and build, you know, a lot of structures on city property and don't ask permission and do anything. But there are a lot of people that have these maintenance agreements that have spent not hundreds, but thousands of dollars to beautify the side of a trail, and yes, they benefit from it because it beautifies their yard. So, I was talking to some of my friends in Open Space Neighborhood last night, and they said, the problem is with a lot of this, is that we don't want to particularly buy that property or anything, we're not trying to be land grabbers. It's just, we want this trail that goes through our neighborhood to look like our neighborhood, instead of being, you know, in many cases, worn out, broken down, in a weed patch. So, maintenance agreements, I think, are a positive thing, and I brought up the trail. Did you go up on the trail and...
I didn't get there today. It was a crazy day.
Well, it was a crazy day, but I invite the council, and I know Kim jogs up that way, and Brittany's been there and things, but if you walk along on Caddy Lane, which is an Open Space Neighborhood, the home's on the north side, abut to the trail, and they've all landscaped to that trail, it's on city property. I don't know how many of those people have maintenance agreements, but it has beautified the trail. And some of it's zero scape, some of it isn't. But I love walking on that trail. So, those are citizens that stepped in and made an improvement to the city. So, I think that's good encroachment, and in some ways, we should encourage people that live next to trails to help beautify them without trying to possess them. So, I would soften the language in this. I think we need the law, but I think it needs to be called maintenance agreements. I think it needs to be kind of citizen-friendly, because I think if it's punitive or looks punitive, it's going to cause more problems than solve goods. Does that make sense? So, I just changed some of the nomenclature on it. Even though they're encroachment agreements, I think maintenance sounds much better.
So, to Scott's point about this, we did, when Brent started working for us, we did, we do refer to him as a code compliance officer rather than code enforcement. So, that is in line with that, the language that Scott's talking about, so I would be fine with that. I think the other thing that's important to realize when we're talking about these is that like, if you just look at your backyard, it seems like the best idea ever, right? Because it seems like nobody uses this, it's just in my backyard. But it's when, when you start looking at the city as a whole, and you see how much property it is, it's like, it's like everything together, and then hearing from the Water Conservancy District, thinking about all the water that we're using that was not planned for, and people who want their manicured pass, and in a lot of times, that was what was planned. And in others, in my neighborhood, it was always planned to be weeds. So, I think we can work on the language, and I'm fine with that. And I think any, like what you're talking about, Scott, that improves the city, that Caddy Lane, I'm fully in favor of that, and also encouraging people to use those standards that we just heard about with the water.
So, let me ask you this. On the maintenance agreement, or if we're going to keep with the name maintenance agreement, you guys want to try to walk through what those are, or have that go back to the committee?
No, 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 the committee, the committee disbanded.
No, the committee's not...
Just right now, the committee just disbanded.
Have the committee come back, say, okay, here's the maintenance agreement, this is now what would be updated if it has some zero scape in it, and some things that way, and then they bring that maintenance agreement back for, you know, understanding that the council is wanting to beautify around the trails, there's some things, I think we have to be careful on water. I have an email from our code enforcement officer, he looked, 21 properties that have encroached are taking up 3.11 acres, they are, it's grass, it's all being watered. I'm just saying, one of our problems is, you know, the system did not anticipate a lot of the water that's going in on some of these systems. Now, I would recommend, if, you know, we could give some recommendations, if they've already, if we already had a maintenance agreement with them, I think it's hard to go back and say, hey, we want you to take that grass out or things, that maybe that's a grandfathering in, and we move forward with that. Now, there's going to be some that won't be, won't be, they can't be part of the maintenance agreements, because maybe some that we don't determine that. The next question, so do we want to hammer out what the maintenance agreement, or take it to the committee and have them bring back the maintenance agreement, what would be recommended in that agreement?
I don't, I don't think we can hammer out an agreement right now.
I have one half, I have one drafted.
Amazing.
How about, this is a discussion...
But I'm not on the committee anymore, so I don't know.
You're still on the committee.
Hey, Brittany, we will give you a 6% raise, that's $24, if you continue on.
A 6%?
And we're going to increase your benefits.
Perfect, and let me drive the fire truck, I'm in, sign me up.
So, she's back on, okay, the question, I'm just saying, how about we have the committee come back, look over the current maintenance agreement, if there's some suggested changes or things, bring that back so the council has it all put together.
So, do you also want us to look at each area of land and make recommendations for each area? Is that something...
The council want to have that.
No, I think I'd rather just have a policy, and then when somebody comes asking for a maintenance agreement, look at that policy, and from that policy, then you can make a decision, just how we did it on open space. Am I off on that, though?
I'd rather not do it that way.
Okay, we won't.
I don't, but we don't, we don't have to.
Yeah, we had talked about that at length as a committee, and the problem with that is then homeowners are left unsure if they should come in or not come in.
Poor Brady.
I'm sorry, Brady.
Yeah.
We're sorry.
But no, I think what the committee...
But I think we need to define that, and so, they know, should I waste my time coming to the city? We should just have it defined, so it's very clear, is what we would recommend, but...
It makes it easier for staff, too.
We're saying this area could be underneath the maintenance agreement versus what the residents, because you're going to have one, maybe residents don't know, but we can, that way the staff, it's easier, I think, for the staff, too.
I feel like that's just a lot of work for you guys to have to go through each of those properties.
It's actually, if we...
No, Kim, we'll just go on a razor, right? It'll be fine.
But we'll have one, we have one on our, the Wimbledon that we can maybe kind of look at, that might give a suggestion for the committee, how to go about that, that we can help maybe walk through that with.
But I would like to know from the rest of council, I would like to have something in the maintenance agreement that is not a 10-years that turns into an infinity clause, so that when the home changes ownership, or when people forget that they cannot put a swimming pool on city property, they are easily reminded.
Right. But I think you have to have the maintenance agreement long enough...
Sure.
That if people put in hundreds of thousands of dollars to improve the property, that they don't have to worry about the city coming in in three years and say, rip it out.
Well, and I think that's...
So, that's, so it needs to renew, yeah.
Yeah, I think that that's fair, but also, I mean, I just would caution any resident against putting hundreds of thousands of dollars into improving...
Well, hundreds or thousands.
Hundreds, okay, I thought you said hundreds of thousands, which seemed crazy.
Now, nobody's putting in hundreds or thousands, except the people that blatantly encroach, but...
Okay, so we're going to take that back to the committee. Now, there is one question, I think, as we look at encroachment, it's property sell. Okay, here we have some encroachers. We have to, I think, decide, is there some of those properties that are, the city doesn't need to keep anymore? Is the city council even want to look at selling? Do they want to look at lease? Or do we only want to look at removal? Does that make sense? Because there's some that we know that we can look and go, okay, it's easy to say they've encroached. Now, what, are we really going to go enforce, have them go rip out retaining walls? For me, some of the areas they put retaining walls could benefit the city for some flood, or, you know, some irrigation controls or things that way, and maybe that's where the committee has to say, hey, that was a maintenance thing. But is the council wanting to look at property sells? And if, and I'll set that, do we want us to look at property sells? Do we want to look at some of these encroachers that maybe, we're going to say they would not be available for a maintenance agreement? They could be available for a lease? Or do we only want to look at removal if it's not available?
I agree with that. I mean, in cases, there's all three. So, there's some places where it makes sense to sell a piece, and we're going to talk about that, I think, in the next discussion item. And in some places where they've already encroached, either choice is one, are you going to lease it, or are you going to make them rip it out? And so, you know, maybe it makes sense to lease the property or part of it, and maybe it makes more sense, but you're going to have to make an individual determination. But I think the leasing option should be an option under the direction of the staff and council.
I have a little bit...
I have a little concern with that, because I'm looking at Brady here. The only person in his area who did not encroach. So, then are we going to reward those people that did? And then Brady doesn't? Because he actually like followed the rules and didn't put in grass and didn't encroach? I guess that's, that's my problem, is what are we teaching?
Again, it depends on whether you want to be Old or New Testament, because I think you need to be flexible.
Yeah, I agree with Brittany. I think, again, we have to step back, and we can say, this section is eligible for sale. There might be, you know, we certainly know of little pockets that are, have houses all around them, no use to the city ever, those should be for sale, and we should dispose of them. But we should not make a decision that because somebody could afford, and I'm going to use a pool, but if somebody could afford a pool, we get to lease it, but if somebody could only afford grass, they have to rip it out. I think that's the, really the wrong way to go. I think lease should be off the table. I think, again, we define what areas are eligible for an agreement, maintenance agreement, what areas are available for sale, and then we let the residents know upfront, and anyone who does not meet one of those two, or like, we go and there's a retaining wall that is benefiting the city, and we say, please leave it, don't rip that out, because, but just know that it belongs to the city now. Thank you for putting in a retaining wall, so we don't have to. So, we, I don't think we can look at it and say, well, you put in something expensive, so you keep it, you put in something cheaper, so you rip it out. I think we just have to say, one or the other, we're so sorry that this is affecting you.
Well, and I think that's nice, it's nice to be black and white, and I think we have to have a policy encroachment. And I don't support blatant encroachment, but at the same time, I think you need to be somewhat flexible with people, because you're going to have to enforce this. So, we have to ask ourselves, who is enforcing it, and what's it going to be like to enforce it? So, it's kind of like, we can send out notices and different things, but are we going to have our understaffed police go and enforce it? We're going to have Brent Wallace enforce it? Who enforces that? Who's going to go say, okay, you, you know, blatant encroachment, you rip it out, or we're going to, you know, we're going to sue you, or whatever? So, I guess before we come in black and white policies, I'd like to... So I, I guess before we come in black and white policies, I'd like to understand the enforcement and how we're going to do that. And I just think, I, I would lean towards flexibility a little bit, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I, I, I agree with Scott in the sense that, I, I agree with his linguistic choices, I think it's more of a metaphor than, than a religious commentary, and I, I think it's that, very valid. And I agree with you. I slightly disagree with both Sarah and Scott in that we do need to delineate certain factors, and we, we do need to be, give def, definitive choices, and we, we're flexible in that sense, but we're not flexible in the sense that, I, I, we, I don't think we can accommodate people that ask for forgiveness as opposed to permission. I, I don't like that concept. I like what, I like what Brady did, he didn't do it. And I think in some cases, maybe it is warranted for us to retain ownership and lease the land. That benefits the city. I think we need to go by what benefits the city the most, and give some options, and they can choose which option is more beneficial to them. But it's definitely in the best interest of the city. And then I have a question for Rob. Of course, my favorite topic of liability, and that is, if we do not delineate and quantify very carefully this policy, are we open to liability? Like unequal application of, of laws that, in, because I can see how this could be very objective as opposed to subjective, so.
So as to kind of the treating people differently, in some regard, selling property is a legislative act.
Is what?
Legislative, meaning the council has discretion, and you could say, property is always unique, so the council will say, the facts of this is just slightly different, and that merits it. So that's not going to open up the city to liability. The only risk of liability, and it's not actual liability, is the longer these things go on unaddressed, the more chance someone may claim an interest to some property, even though that claim may not be successful, they may raise the claim to begin with.
What is the basis of the claim? Like an implied easement?
An implied easement, or reliant when the city's in action. It's not a good claim, in my opinion. It won't go very far, but sometimes people may be emboldened to make that kind of claim the longer this is discussed, but not acted upon.
But it's still an expense to the city.
It's an expense to the city in the fact of, the city will always have to respond to it if someone raises the claim.
So it's in our best interest to make a--
To make a policy.
Make a policy, and make it as--
Consistent and enforceable as possible.
Okay.
Now, in terms of how that policy works out, that's up to the council, but having a policy will, will be helpful to that.
Okay, thanks.
I think it's really, you know, I'm, I'm hearing a mixture of, some want to only evaluate if it's for sale, some are saying that they don't want to look at the lease. Do we need input there so we can have it go back? You know, because like you said, and the for sale stuff, that could be subjective, if we needed not, and that's going to have to come back to the councils, the whole council can't, you know, it can't just be a committee, it'd have to come back to the council on the property for sale. Is there any, you know, I've heard from two councils that they are maybe looking at the lease factor. So Rob, if we did a lease, does that state any type of ownership by saying, hey, you've had a lease, and if we ask you to leave, that they have some option, they could come and ask us to reimburse some expenses?
So we could craft the lease to avoid that kind of restriction. The difference between, say, a maintenance agreement and a lease, is a lease is a type of property interest. It's called a leasehold interest in the law. By granting a lease, you're granting someone, it's not a definite property, but it is some kind of property interest to the property. They have the right to maintain that. Now, we could put a lot of conditions in the contract, but that's why I think the council has previously and wisely gone with a maintenance agreement route, where it was never considered a lease or any kind of property right. Now that said, we could put a lot of limitations, there's a lot of commercial leases out there where, upon the expiration of the lease, the person has to tear out the improvements, that's not an uncommon thing. The, the tricky thing is terminating the lease earlier is much more difficult, rather than just a maintenance agreement where we say, you don't have any property right, but we appreciate your work.
So Rob, if I want to, can I go home and dig a pool tonight and then ask to lease it tomorrow? I mean, that seems--
I mean, no.
That's, I mean, I--
If the council said yes, you could.
And, and does that mean that if I want to just lease the 20 square feet behind my house, I can do that, too?
I mean, the council would have to approve it.
Well, I mean, I was on the encroachment committee, so I'm not on the enforcement committee, which is why I'm asking everybody else. I mean, I just think it's complicated, I don't have all the answers yet, which is, I mean, really unfortunate.
Okay, maybe they can kind of keep us moving along. Property sell, this idea of lease, I've heard, Tim, I understand you are in favor of the lease, Scott, you sound like you're in favor of the lease. Is there at least three council members that want to have us look at this as a lease option? Or is that not, the majority of the council would like to lean that way?
You know, I just, I want it in, as one of the tools, or one of the arrows in the quiver. I, I just think it needs to be an option, because I'm totally opposed to this blatant encroachment. I, I don't want people to think that I'm promoting it, but I think you need to have different tools for different situations a little bit, and an option. And, you know, it's okay if we just say, rip it out, or have a maintenance agreement, if that's what the council wants. But to me, it seems like we need to have some option for selling some property that the city has no use for, which would generate funds to improve other parts of the open space and parks, or lease property if there's been an issue there, and maybe find a compromise, and that lease money could go to benefit the city. So, I don't know, it's, it's hard to say. I know where there's bad encroachments are in the conservation areas, which should have never happened, and that it's different along the trails, I think, as a whole. So I, I'd just like to have as many tools in the quiver, so I have a firm policy, but you're going to have to look at each one of these places where there's been an encroachment and make a decision. And I think it's going to be a hard decision to say, okay, you've got 30 days to rip this out. And, and I just think, maybe that's not the best solution, because what if we make people rip it out, it goes back to weeds, and they have a fire, and it burns down the neighborhood? How liable is the city with that? So I just think you need to be flexible a little bit, that's where I'm coming.
I'm amenable to that.
Okay, then now we have, so amenable by Kim, so let's now go back to the, the committee. You're looking at maintenance agreements, you're also going to be looking, because those maintenance agreements, you're going to give a recommendation, maintenance or not. We're not going to ask you to give a recommendation for property sell with the possibility of a lease, if you see that there could be a lease, or maybe even also the recommendation to remove. You okay with that?
Yeah, I would like to, you know, if we are going to put leases on the table, my concern is, is that, you know, we'd want to still define which properties would be eligible, not eligible, and not have it based on, you have spent more money on your encroachment, right? I don't want to say, well, you get to lease because you spent the most money, and we just don't want to tell you to rip it out.
Luckily, you're on the committee.
I don't want that to be the criteria.
No, and I agree 100% with that.
If there's some place that just really makes sense, I just can't think in my mind where that would be yet. I mean, I'm certainly would be willing to keep an open mind, and, and if that fits, and if that benefits the city and the residents of Highland, then let's keep it on the table, but, but let's also keep it, an open mind that's saying, maybe that's not going to be a fit.
I'm happy to take that back to the committee, but I would, I feel like I would need reinforcement from either Kelly, or Nathan, or, Rob, you've never been to one of my committee meetings. I'll bring treats, it'll be a good time, do you want to come?
I will happily come.
Yes.
At a small fee.
They never--
Okay, now let's move--
I wish you hadn't said that.
So that's going back to the committee. Okay, now, on this encroachment policy, do we want to wait for that, them to come back with the maintenance agreement, what their suggestion is for property sell, lease, or remove? And then we, then we have the, the policy, or do we want, Rob, we already have kind of a policy, is it something, we need to bring those, those two items back, and then we look at our encroachment policy, and, and then pass that?
I would like to bring everything back at once, because I think we get in trouble when we do something one piece at a time. Let's not do it until we're ready--
Okay.
--to do it holistically.
Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
I'm okay. And I want to express my thanks to Brittany and, and everyone that's been on the committee, and Sarah. It's a hard thing, and I really deeply appreciate it, and I think it's great that we all have different ideas and opinions, because I think it makes it a better thing in the end. And so I'm not opposing, and, and you and I are going to have a little discussion about the difference between the Old and the New Testament.
I need that, yeah, I sometimes skip out on that.
Council, are you okay if I invite one of our residents to come up, that this, this policy could possibly affect, benefit, or things of that nature?
I think we should annex all county property--
Brady, Brady, would you be interested to come up, or you?
No, I, I'd hate to talk to them.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other discussion items, or any other things that we need to discuss on that item? Okay. Being sensitive on, hopefully, do you feel, we, we will go before we go to the number nine, which is the, or number 10, which is some discussion items. Let's go to the number eight now, which is the consideration amendment of number one of the development agreement with Mill Haven Development LLC. And then we, we also are anticipating that we're going to hear from one of the employees of Mill Haven that's going to share with us, where is, was it a son that received a mission call tonight, or just a friend?
That was her.
Okay, maybe you can share where they're at, go and get the mission call.
I don't even know.
Okay, Andy?
Okay, so, Mayor and Council, what we're looking at tonight, just go to the next slide, just to refresh everybody, the city, last April, so April 2021, entered into a development agreement with Mill Haven, whereby Mill Haven constructed Canal Boulevard, did some improvements on 10-200 there, and, and then also, at the time, it was entertained that Mill Haven was going to build the entire trail through the Mitchell Hollow area. As we all know all too well, the expenses of today are not the expenses of a year ago. And there were some things that, you know, still had to be figured out, some minor details that would come into that as well, but we are now close enough, they will be paving Canal Boulevard in the very near future, the very, very near future. I don't know exactly the day, but Todd can hopefully tell us the day, but we are very close to paving it, and so the final expenses are known. In, in a general sense, the expenses for Canal Boulevard went up by a little over $100,000, and there were slightly more expenses on, on 10-200 by like $3,500 or so. And, but the trail, actually, if you recall, the council authorized us to spend the $167,000 that were in the budget, up to the $167,000 that were in the budget, to do the little teeny section of trail that is on lots 31, and 31, 45, and 46. We ended up working with both Mill Haven and the adjacent property owners, and the adjacent property owners ended up doing a large portion of the work there. Mill Haven did participate very actively, and Todd specifically, in, in helping us work with the property owners and find a solution that everybody felt good about, and they also did some grading there, but the reimbursement to Mill Haven came down from the $167 to just $13,000. Again, I think we found a, a good solution everybody can feel good about, and, and hopefully, you know, economically saved a lot, you know, quite a bit of money. There is other payments that will go to the residents, because they ended up taking over the construction, but again, all of that construction came down from the $167. We, I think we have a budget update on that roughly around December, January, I don't remember exactly, and we were anticipating that that would come in, you know, around $90,000, and right now it looks like we'll even be less than that on that. Now, that doesn't get us that pa, section paved. We think we'll be best to hold off and pave that section of trail when we do the balance of the trail, but that does get the retaining walls in, the fences in, the grade cut, and the trail established, if you will, for that. So as staff, we recommend the, the improvements. We did request that Mr. Train attend, to be able to speak to any of these increased costs, if council had any questions, but we feel that they've been extremely fair with the city, and the construction's been well managed, and, you know, that we're appreciative of all the efforts that have gone into the, the roadwork. So with that, would entertain any questions that you have, either from myself, or I imagine you could ask Todd, any questions you'd like.
Where is the mission call for, Todd?
And what do you think about leasing open space?
I, I, no comment on that one, just, just on this agenda item, but no, I, a, a young man I have coached for many, many years, a good friend of my son, opened it tonight. And it was just, I knew it was going to conflict, because he was opening at 9:30, and so I texted Nathan and said, hey, if I step out, just bump me. So I appreciate you and your patience. He was called to Wichita, Kansas. My son got his last week, going to Farmington, New Mexico.
Oh, cool.
So, and to answer the question--
Is your other son home yet?
Uh, he comes home in June, so--
Will they?
And my other son leaves in August, and so they'll have, yeah, they'll have--
You should plan a vacation.
My wife's already thinking about it, so I just said, tell, tell us where you're going, and we'll go, so.
That's awesome. Probably a lot of the public are going, hey, we have a developer here, and look how friendly the council is to this developer. We want to say, Todd used to work for the city as our city engineer up until last year.
I, I, I miss this a little bit. I miss all of you a lot. But late, late meetings, I, I, I'm glad I only go to them every once in a while now, so, but you, Andy has stepped in very well and filled my small shoes, so.
So can I ask one question, Todd?
Yes.
Can we refer to you as the father of Canal Boulevard?
No. It's kind of like Lauren Powell--
Are you responsible for much of it?
No, Lauren, Lauren Powell, when people call it Little Lake Powell, the--
The Dry Creek Lake?
The Dry Creek Lake, he says absolutely not. So I will say, no, don't put my name on anything, so. But to answer Andy's question, the hope was to pave Friday or Saturday, but, you know, to be fair with Highland employees, I, I like them a lot, and weather, we will probably pave Monday, Tuesday.
And this is the Canal Boulevard connection, this will now--
Addison Avenue.
Yeah, well, Madison Avenue, Canal Boulevard, it connects it all together, all the way now down to 6800 West.
If you remember, we left off the top lift of what's currently paved, and so now you'll see a brand new road all the way across.
So I can take literally this road all the way down to Canal Boulevard? I mean, I, I mean to 6800 to--
Correct.
Oh, man.
Well, we, we--
North County.
We may not, we, we may not open it up, because we still have to do a little bit of landscaping and stuff, but it will be paved on Monday.
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, just roughly, you're probably about a month away from it actually opening up, but the big step's getting the pavement down.
I'll run it.
Then we'll get some, you know, some pavement striping, the last little touches, and it'll probably be open in about a month.
We'll have a ceremony.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have to do the, the concrete collars with valves and things, so, but it will be paved.
How is this subdivision coming along?
Good, most of the lots are sold.
Not all of them, though?
No, Mill Haven kept a few, so not, not too many.
For us, Brittany, that's what they said.
Hey, you give me a call, you have an inside track, so, no.
Great, we have a builder here--
That's on the record, too.
Your $24 raise can help you with that.
But to, to go along with what the agenda item is, back when the maintenance, well, maintenance, the reimbursement agreement was signed, I believe it was in May last year, Nathan, is that the original one? I don't, I had-
April of 2021.
I printed a copy of it out, and it's sitting on my desk, so. But when we originally signed that with Mill Haven as Highland City, so this is kind of complicated, because I was on, basically, we did not have all the bits back, and the, and the final engineering for the bridge was not complete. And so Andy has been great, we have had several meetings out on site, we've made changes to the, to the bridge, we actually went with a different block to save money. We, we've done a lot of things to try to save as much money as possible, but with the current environment, costs have just been increasingly going up. Also, the original design only had a three-foot wrought iron fence across, that was not adequate. We had to go with a six-foot. And so there were some cost changes along the way that we reduced, and then, and bottom line, the, the costs in front of you today is what it actually cost. And so, but if you go back and look at the original agreement, we did not have some of those costs finalized. It was, it was all based on estimates. And so I feel like we've done a really good job, Andy's worked well with us to save as much money as we can, but this is the hard cost of what the road cost us, so.
Now, share with the council, why are we reimbursing you as a developer for this road?
So the road is on the transportation master plan. You've been collecting fees for, for years, impact fees, road impact fees, to pay for this section of road. And because there's no frontage at all to the road, it was a, it, it's a, a major collector through the, through the city, that we dedicated all of the right-of-way as Mill Haven, and a whole bunch of the open space as well, that kind of went along with the trail design and all of that. In exchange, the city used those fees to pay for the road. So we've paid for all of the utilities underneath it, it's just road expenses that would be reimbursed.
So the bill now from, from Madison Avenue is $1,406,058?
That is currently what we have, yes.
And how much over budget is that than what we anticipated?
It says 142,000.
I, I can answer that question.
Okay.
It was really close to 100,000, if I remember correctly. That sound about right, Nathan?
It's hiding. It was-
It's 142,000.
That total was there. Oh, it's 142,000 is, is how much over budget.
So that's on the road?
And so 102, 102, 10-200, excuse me, 10-200 North. The reason we had a little bit of overage there is because when we expanded the roadway, basically on the Mill Haven plans, they did not have a design of that. Alls we were doing is widening it. If you remember, for some reason, in the Wimbledon subdivision, that road was narrow. We didn't, we had the right-of-way, we just didn't have the road constructed properly. We don't know why it was constructed that way, but we required Mill Haven to do it, and then we would pay for it, because it wasn't part of their development. But what happened was, is when we widened it, we didn't have the proper slope on the asphalt, and so we had to go a little bit further out to the center line. So Ty worked with us out on site, we got the proper slopes down to the curb, and, and so that's where the little bit of extra cost came from, was more asphalt.
And so that's on the road, and then what we, we funded you, or we were planning on paying you 167,000 to put that trail in, but what we're stating is that of the unused, we're going to have 163,350 that is not going to Mill Haven, but would go to maybe some others that did work here, some of the neighbors and that there? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. So, so between Andy and I, we met many, many times with the neighbors to try to resolve this, but ultimately, what we, what the goal was, is that we were trying to get the, the trail graded through that section, so that both property owners knew where that trail was, and could landscape or put up fences accordingly, because that's the one section that was just really, really difficult to get the trail through. Now it will cross over the wetland, and now it's kind of an open canvas. We have an alignment, but Andy's working on some funds through MAG to try to extend that trail. And we just felt like, let's get this one section of, of trail done. We, with our contractor, did all the grading, and then Andy and I worked with the neighbors, and they've decided to put up their fence on their own, and some walls, and, and we feel like it's worked out really well with the neighbors. And now the two property owners in the Hollow subdivision have the trail elevation, and they know what they can design to. So that's, that's where we are with that, and that's why it went from 167 down to 13,000. We just did the grading in there.
Counsel, any questions? Ready for a motion?
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Todd.
I'll make a motion. I move that the City Council approve Amendment Number One to the development agreement with Mill Haven Development LLC, and authorize the mayor to execute the document.
I'll second it.
Moved by Kim, seconded by Scott. Are you ready for a vote? Tim? Tim's a yes. That passes five to zero. We will now move on to item number 10, Mayor and Counsel and Staff Communication Items. Our first item is open space disposal. Wimbledon subdivision is a discussion item. We have the, oh, you have, you have a map to put up so people can see? So on the Wimbledon subdivision, we've had a lot of different discussions. Last year, when we did the property sale, if you want to say where we had the residents submit, Wimbledon, because of the referendum, was not able to submit. And so as a property sell, none of these owners were able to submit. So what I've kind of done, this is my, I've went as a, and just went, and this is just my suggestion of what we kind of do in the Wimbledon area. Starting up in the northeast corner, there is a trail that goes along between Wimbledon subdivision and the Mill Haven Development, we were just talking about. I am proposing that we allow the residents, if they desire, to buy up to five, with, in five feet of the trail. So you're going to go the trail there, it's asphalt, and go back five feet. If there's any area in the red there, they would be able to purchase. The question the council would need to answer is, is there a concern to make sure that all, like, if you have four property owners in one area, would you like to have the stipulation that all four need to purchase, so the property lines would be straight, or if it's not a concern, you could sell them individually? So anything in the red meets the criteria of coming within five feet of the trail. You'll notice that there's an area that's in blue. These are the areas that I'm recommending that the City Council enter into maintenance agreements. Now, the one thing that we need to understand, if we do sell the property in red, that we have a city code. In our city code, if the property owners along a trail have a trail corridor less than 40 feet, both property owners must, if they're building a six-foot fence, leave the top two feet open. And so by selling the, the red, it brings in that 40 feet. If we don't sell the red area, so you'll, any of the red area, the property owners, being Mill Haven on the one side, they could build a solid six-foot fence. The second we sell the property here in Wimbledon, Mill Haven would have to follow the fence code. They'd go up four feet, and then the last two feet would be open trellis, and then those individuals in Wimbledon would also have to follow the same criteria of the first four feet can be solid, and then the last two feet can be open. Am I explaining that right, Kelly?
So how wide would the remaining trail corridor be?
You're talking about if all of that property was sold-
Well, it'd be five feet, at least on both sides, and if the Mill Haven comes over, you've got the ditch that you've got to get rid of on the east side, and, and the trail is so wide. So how exactly wide would the trail corridor be?
Yeah, all of this, that's the thing. I did a buffer that took out, there are only about two or three properties where once you sold five feet from the trail, that it encroached into that 20-foot corridor, and so I took those out. So all of this, as represented, is above 20, so it never goes less than 20. But there are portions of it, like you can see on the north side, where it's going to be closer to about 35. I did some markings. Let me see if I can find it.
Here's my recommendation, how we apply our lounge trails, and this will go to your maintenance agreements, or if we sell. If we look at the Wimbledon trail on the east side, we have the, we have the property owners in Wimbledon that have backyards backing up. But the trail on the other side, going to, going to the Mill Haven, is, is a little bit more open. Does that make sense? It fills more of an open field. Well, with that, if you could sell up to five feet, if there was another property owner that butted up the trail on the backside, I'd recommend that we would go eight feet, that we keep the trail corridor from closing in, to keep it a minimum of 24 feet. And I think that's what our, what they've, we've done throughout the city, is we try to keep, if there's two neighbors on each side that back, go back up against the trail, we don't let them buy in more than eight, you know, we keep eight feet out.
I thought it was the five, the, well-
Five, five here, because you have the Mill Haven further away.
Right, well, it's, it's always been, because our standard is a 10-foot wide trail, and then when you have five feet on each side, it becomes a 20-foot wide corridor. We did, we did-
Plus the width of the trail.
Uh-huh. We did have in Highland Hills, those sales where it was eight feet from the trail, where we put that split rail, but other than that, other than that, it's been the five feet.
Anyway, any input from the council here on the Wimbledon proposal before you?
So my question is, this is the first I've seen about it. I would like more time to digest it and research it, and also see how it works into what we're doing with the open space.
Perfect.
Because then I think the Wimbledon area also has to, we need to look at it in the same objective manner that we're going to look at the rest of the city. And so I think it would be unfair to say, yeah, go ahead and sell this, or don't sell this, or, or do maintenance agreement when we haven't figured out our other plan for the entire city.
So I'll make some comments on this, because I, I have a lot of relationships into the Wimbledon area, since I've been involved with some of the issues in this neighborhood for a long time. So I actually presented this to some people that have been involved down there quite a bit. They like the idea, and, and they, they want to kind of reinforce the idea is that the purpose, and the reason they supported buying the trail, wasn't because they were trying to grab land. And I think it was unfair that that was kind of as a portrayal. I know some people, of course, wanted to expand their lots and different things, but the big concern they had was maintenance of this trail. So I heard time and again, is that we have this beautiful manicured neighborhood, and we have an unkept trail. And we, and we've talked about the reasons for that time and again, and I'm not criticizing the city staff. But they, basically, if they're going to have the trail there, want it maintained. So I kind of thought, as I suggested, that there was some interest in buying this five, 10 feet, and, and if they wanted to, to put up a fence that's two feet open on the top. But at the same time, my suggestion was that if we do sell, and they agree to this, why not take some of the proceeds from the sale of this land to kind of upgrade that trail, to resurface it, rebuild it if we need to, and decide if there's some way that we can do more maintenance than just mowing the weeds. Because the big argument has always been in this neighborhood, has been the maintenance of that trail. And I think, you know, the city as a whole has voted to keep the trail. I think it's great, I support it 100%. But I think we need to allow, or come up with some way to make that trail a beautiful part of the city, and I think that would alleviate a lot of the problems. And there, there was interest in buying this property, and we're talking, you know, we calculated in this particular lot, it'd be about a $3,000 deal that they give the city, and maybe spend that money to maintain the trail. I, you know, there's lots of options. But we still need to look at that ditch on the east side, because we've voted to get rid of it, but we've got to get the neighborhood on the south to agree to go on the pressurized irrigation so we can. So that's, you know, it's complicated.
So on the neighbors, since you brought up about, we have to get rid of the ditch, there's a ditch, that's a Lehigh irrigation ditch on the far east side. There is one user down at the very bottom, down by the church in 6800 West. Staff has approached, I believe Todd had been there several times, trying to get this worked out. And we've been asked, the, the resident there, the, the, you know, the resident is a little bit older, and the family is asked that we don't contact and bother them at this time. And so we've tried to honor that, that wish. You know, and, and it's, they have a past, a past, pasture with, 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 I think they're leasing it out to some horses, and so it's been a little bit of a, a soft, I, I don't know how many times we've talked about, can we get rid of that irrigation line? But that's kind of where that's at. So Scott, I don't, you know, I think the council, we have to be careful in saying, and then maybe it's where we do start to sell, we look at all the trails, you know, all the trails we need to look at, you know, we hopefully, we should see, we already have a trail maintenance kind of plan, but we're going to see in May, a little bit more updated on that. I believe Mike just sent that to you, Andy, here in the last week, and so that will be coming into the council in May, to kind of start looking a little bit heavier at our maintenance, and making sure we're, you know, we, we are doing down, if we all remember, this, this year, we took the money to go down to Highland Glen Park, and now this next budget year, there's 70,000 in for the open space, and I believe there's, is another 60 or 70,000 for the other trails in the Highlands, so we can kind of look at some of that.
Sure, but we've got the quarter cent sales tax, which you're talking about, which helps us maintain. But when you do property sales in the open space, the council, and many times in the past, said, there's a, we think it should stay in the open space neighborhoods. So I'm just suggesting that this may, you know, may assuage a lot of the issues. I don't know.
So, but Sarah, you mentioned that you want to apply this to see how it applies amongst all of the, you know, what we're trying to, I have to say as a council, this might be a good one to give the committee some input here. Do you like a little bit what was done here? If you don't, what is it, because if they're applying for a maintenance agreement, or they're applying if it should be sold, is this kind of a criteria that they can look at, that the council would say this might be something we could look at?
Right. And a lot of those people have maintenance agreements already.
And I think we're going to have to look at this one a little bit differently. We just are. And I like Scott's idea.
Okay. Any other input here? So what we're going to be doing, waiting on the Wimbledon, we're waiting, is it waiting before we do anything here, is coming back from the committee that's dealing, dealing with the maintenance agreements and the encroachment or property sales, as they come back, this will be one of the subdivisions that should be looked at very first?
I, I agree. I think it should be looked at soon, because I think we need to kind of resolve some issues down there.
I, I think we owe it to them to resolve some issues, so I would be comfortable looking at it even sooner, just give us a little bit of time to like, look at this and then think about it. But I think we need to, we need to finish this one as quick as we can.
So there, there we go, kind of first subdivision, kind of looking at what, how it might apply. Anything else? Any other discussion items that we, Nathan, do we have, there's future meetings, we have a future meeting on May 3, City Council. I believe on May 5, we have an open house. Is that correct, Nathan?
That's correct.
So we probably ought to mark it here, on May 5, we will be having an open house. May 11 is our Lone Peak Public Safety District Board Meeting. May 17, another City Council. May 24 is Planning Commission Meeting. Now, there might be, are we, we had talked about, and as a council, as we look at, if we're looking to do a fee or a tax, I would, excuse me, recommend that we put in there another meeting for the residents to come and discuss what we're proposing as a fee increase, or that, I guess we'll decide on the fee, that we have, you know, we could do it at the open house, but we have also another meeting to go through.
Yes, if you recall, we sent an email out on potential dates. We are still solidifying those. April 26 is a reminder of a meeting about the playground. But we'll send that out again, so you guys have that. I don't remember the dates off the top of my head on everything, but.
Sounds good. Do I have a motion adjourned to closed session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Why are we going to, can you move why we're going to closed session?
Oh, come on. Okay. We're moving to closed session. To discuss, we're going to recess to closed session, discuss pending a reasonably imminent litigation, and the purchase, exchange, or release of real property as provided by the Utah Code, annotated number 52-4-205.
So that was, a motion was by Scott, I believe it was seconded by Kim. All in favor? We will now go to closed session. Appreciate those being here.